Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For this regular meeting of the Exeter Town Council to order seven oh three, asking Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Cal Ellis.
Here.
Francie Gregorio.
Here.
Mike Khan.
Here.
Neander.
Here.
Dan Tavson.
We begin with public comment. Paul, you're supposed to speak.
Yes, I just want to be recognized for during the meeting under new business, item D.
Since you asked to have it added to your agenda, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you, sir.
Diana.
I wanted to say that I just speak to that issue.
We'll address that at item D, is it? Uh-huh. Yes.
Thank you.
And Asa.
I've got some comments regarding the DEM notice discussed at the last meeting, the accuracy of the statements from the public works director. Bruce Ahearn's worked for the DEM for decades, starting about the same time Steve Matczek was graduating from the eighth grade. He's not the new guy in this situation. His works contributed to some high-profile cases in Newport, Bristol, Block Island, and Gloucester, so it's worth taking his report seriously. As Steve said, the brook is dry eighty to ninety percent of the time. That's not accurate. The USGS sampling station, which is about eighty feet south of the property line, shows water presence most of the years with typical flows from November to May between a half gallon and six gallons per second. The entire property is in a GA water district, which means the groundwater ultimately winds up in wells supplying drinking water. The property overlays two wellhead protection areas and a good portion is designated flood area. Steve says the screen crossing goes back decades. Google Earth photos show no crossing in the May 2015 photo or before, but clear tire tracks in the August 2016 photo. This was created within the last four years, not decades ago. The DEM handles three main types of permits: stormwater pollution, also called RIPDES, wetlands, and OWTS, or septic. The permits cover different areas, don't overlap, and if you get one, it doesn't mean you're exempt from the program. The septic system on the Upper First Garage is not grandfathered. The law outlawing cessables and returning permitted septic systems was passed in 1968. While the wetlands permit application for the original building shows the septic system, it wasn't a septic permit application. The existing septic system isn't grandfathered, it's unpermitted and illegal. If it was put in in nineteen eighty-three, it's thirty-five years old. Most leach fields have about a twenty-year life. It's long overdue for inspection. Whether it's working or not, it probably needs to come out because it's in the wetlands and it's too close to the drinking water well. The town stormwater plan that I received dates back to 2003 to comply with the 1995 permit. Half the designated pollution control team is retired or longer employed by the town. It doesn't cover any buildings built since 2003, which is more than half the building square footage. These permits work on a voluntary submission system by taxes. A facility develops a plan and submits it to DEM to comply with the permit. If the facility doesn't submit, it doesn't comply. The plan we have wasn't submitted to the DEM. Every few years, when the RIPDES regulations get updated, DEM sends out a notice to each facility to have to check the regs, update their plans, and certify the plan meets the new regs. If the facility doesn't send the update, the old permit is automatically canceled. There have been three or four updates since the current town plan was developed. So contrary to what you heard, the town has no current valid stormwater permit from DEM. Even if it was valid, it only covers potential hazardous runoff from the facility. It doesn't permit changes in wetland areas like adding berms or building a clearing in the wetland buffers. These require DEM wetlands permits, and none has ever been requested, according to the DEM. You haven't been able to build salt sheds in GA water districts for over a decade, from what I understand, unless they're less than a hundred cubic yards or completely weatherproof. Ours has a fabric roof, an open front, is roughly thirty times bigger, and it was built in 2018, according to the building permit application signed by Steve Matczek and issued by Ron DiFrancesco. The building permit indicates it isn't in a flood area, which isn't true. DEM received no wetlands applications for its structure or for the two prior building permits dated 2014 and 2017, twenty-seven, 2007, both also stating not in a flood area with the same signatures. There's no building permit required for the basketball court, but there should have been a wetlands permit application for that since it's within two hundred feet of the brook. DEM didn't get one of those either. There was a claim in the last meeting that footprints haven't changed in decades. It's not clear if this was a reference to building footprints or cleared area footprints, but in either case, it's wrong. The three building permits since 2007 increased the building square footage by nine thousand square feet, an increase of one hundred and thirty-six percent over twelve years. For cleared area, the GIS photos show an increase of roughly four acres, almost all in the wetlands, in the last five years. You're not supposed to clear wetlands without a DEM permit. You're also not supposed to dump junk like plastic barrels and pallets and old tires either. Apparently, this got missed by the DEM report, but evidently we've been doing that, too.
Item four on the agenda, acknowledgements. I would just like to speak briefly to the new firefighters memorial on the former lab school property that was dedicated on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. I was pleased to have been invited and very, very pleased that I attended. It was a very moving ceremony in recognition of, I believe, eighty-nine firefighters who have lost their lives since records were kept. And if you have the opportunity, you really need to make it your business to visit that memorial opposite the Phoenix House on the, I call it the far end or the north end, north end of the campus. Please make it your business to visit. And to those who helped to make it, make it an accomplishment, particularly our own Scott Cattell, former fire chief at Exeter One. He received a good deal of recognition for being one of the driving forces behind that memorial. So please see it. My only regret is that some of the volunteers that serve us so well, not only here but in other communities, didn't receive a bit more recognition. But Scott, thank you. And then the pleasant topic of an annual holiday or a Christmas tree lighting, which was established some years ago, generally occurs on the first Thursday of December. We would anticipate this year probably will be on Thursday, December fifth, here outside. Most of you know that. I was asked that I let you know ahead of time so that you can prepare. And why not? Because as you see in the stores, decorations are out, cards are displayed. We're just skipping Thanksgiving and moving right into Christmas. So that's coming up in the first week of December. Any other announcement or acknowledgement that any member of the council wanted to make? Hearing none, we move to the approval of the agenda order. Entertain a motion of the approved is presented.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, but we approve the agenda order that you've been presenting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. And we move to the consent agenda, which tonight happens to be an unusually lengthy one. So ask members of the council, public as well, if you have copies of the agenda, and there are copies here, anyone of like one. We can move through this together. There are two vouchers for the rentals trust, which is about one hundred sixty-eight. The courts, are there any that members of the council wish to remove?
Number seventeen.
Court number seventeen. Others? Moving to communications, several will be addressed during the course of the meeting, one of them being Stan, and two others I'd like to see addressed would be fifteen and nineteen, ten fifteen and nineteen. I'll just move down the table. Frank, number two and number five. Mike, is it Manny?
I'm good, actually, thank you.
Yeah? You received the schedule of November meetings and events, any comment? Hearing none. You also received a bill sheet. You have tax collectors' agreements and remittances. Note, there are no assessors' agreements this month. With regard to minutes, I believe we will all put the happy's minutes in front of us. I believe all of us were present for all of those sessions and meetings. We'll move on to the licenses. Notice that we have under billing licenses. Let me turn the page, is it seven, eight? Seven. And I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if we go through each of these categories. Do you see those generally in order?
All right. Big deal, license renewals, everybody's met requirements except for Wolf Rock and Cora One Deli, they owe sales tax permits. Junkyard license renewals, all set, good metal departments.
And just for the record, it should be noted that includes the floor's P.O. offers from both assessors and collectors officers.
Building department, town sards.
And so.
And they also, the act panel also has to provide certain documentation. Dealer and junk, both are all set. Secondhand dealer's license, all are all set. Recycling, all set. Trailer park, all set.
I just want to stop you quickly because I just want to be sure, and you know that the list of residents has been provided as required by ordinance.
You're welcome. Rubbish removal, all set, except for waste management. They haven't paid the application fee. Firearms dealers, all set, except for Exeter indoor firing range. Have to provide a state copy of the state federal license and the sales portal. And private detective is all set.
Thank you. When we move to approve, we would be.
Cal, but I've got to recuse myself on item N, one, two, and three.
I understand. You said N or F?
N. All three of them I have to recuse myself on.
All right.
Well, Lynn can give it a small, she gets a chance.
Sure. And when we vote, it'll be understood that you're not voting on that particular section. Questions from the council regarding any of our licenses, applications? And it's understood when we approve that no licenses are issued until all the requirements and here are. So we may approve them, but some of them are obviously approved subject to completion of fees that need to be paid.
Yeah, so you want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and just a motion for those four?
Could do that. We should do that. Madam Clerk is suggesting that we remove those four applications where there are some missing elements. So I would entertain a motion. Why don't we also remove that section? Which one is it, Ann?
Ann.
Why don't we remove section N as well? Plus those four where some of the paperwork has not been completed. And before I call a motion, I just want to say how they go through this, through the years. I want to bag Madam Clerk and the staff and the other departments for moving this forward because it's just, it's such a benefit.
You've got to place things in front of you.
Is it not, Madam Clerk? Having said that, I entertain a motion that the consent agenda be approved as amended with the exception of those items that we withheld.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, I won't repeat it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. With regard to those four license applications, which Madam Clerk is here, G two and five and.
M eight.
And M eight.
And three.
And three, with the exception of those, oh, those are the ones we're going to vote on now. And also section N, if you wish not to vote in this motion. Entertain a motion, we approve those special cases.
So moved.
All right. And a second. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one, and opposed, and one abstention, and recusal, correct? I think we've moved through all those pages that quickly, didn't you?
No.
Item seven, regarding vacancies, appointments, personnel board, consummation commission, still out there, there are no resignations. Oh, and there was an item that was, was drawn, or being held till we get to the last section on reports. Remember, there's a report section, and that's when we'll address that one. It's reports plus those that have been removed. It's okay. We've been together so long, and he realizes that it's easy for me to. This one's okay. Bached in.
You're usually correcting me.
No, 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 not at all. Regarding appointments, with regard to item seven C, there is still a vacancy. We hope to fill it in December. We did extend the deadline for applications since we had received only two, to work with the planner, to reach out and cast, as she says, a larger net. So we use the website Indeed, which some of you may know. Those of us that are beyond the working age might not be familiar with it. But others may know it, and a number of applications have come in, and we're working on reviewing those.
Right. I'm working with the planner and reviewing and sorting them out. There's sixty-two as of last Thursday, we talked about that, that have come in. It's the first time I've been involved in trying to screen applications.
We've.
I didn't realize it was such a project.
We've never.
Especially with sixty-two.
We've never had sixty-two applicants for any position. However, those can be easily screened, and first round is being done internally by the planners, and she has to work most closely with the planning, with clerk. And Frank is assisting. And finally, there will be a small pool of applicants that we will ultimately interview before the December meeting. I had previously in a word session urged the council to let the planner or Frank know if there was an applicant you're aware of, not specially considered, but before they ensure they consider. If they say to Frank, I actually know that. Oh, and we're moving to item seven C, clerical assistant for Madam Clerk, and she has a recommendation she feels she'd like to make. Do a letter, I hope she'll like to read it.
Sure.
Do you have it?
I do.
I have it somewhere, but I thought it would be handy for her. Why don't you read it for the record?
To the Exeter Town Council, reappointment clerical assistant. Dear Council, as you know, the appointment of Pat Whitford as deputy town clerk left her position as clerical assistant vacant. That position has been posted. Four letters of interest were received, they have been reviewed. After careful consideration and discussion with most qualified candidates, I highly recommend that Jeanette Morrissey be appointed clerical assistant. Ms. Morrissey has been employed with the town of Exeter for several years, first as board of canvases member and presently as tax assessors clerk, thus has an inside firsthand understanding of the workings of the town government. Both of those apartment heads most heartily and highly recommend Ms. Morrissey for the position of clerical assistant. Ms. Morrissey has also, since May of this year, been assisting in my office during the absence of previous deputy town clerk, Ruth Stone. In my observation, she has proven herself to be a good fit for the town clerk's office. She knows the phone and computer systems, she learns quickly, and has excellent public relations skills. I believe and trust that appointment of Ms. Morrissey as clerical assistant in the clerk's office will be most beneficial to both the office and the public. Sincerely, Lynn M. Hawkins.
You've heard Madam Clerk's letter of request to the council, asking that we consider the appointment of Jeanette Morrissey, a position in the office, with the motion in that regard.
I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to appoint Jeanette Morrissey as a clerical assistant in the front office to assist the new deputy town clerk, should the deputy town clerk need any assistance. And with regard to the motion, let me just ask Madam Clerk, what would you think might be an appropriate start date for the council?
I discussed it with Ms. Morrissey, the tax assessor and treasurer, and I think the day after the holidays, the twelfth, would be the best.
A week from tomorrow.
Yep. That would be a good start point. Payroll reasons for finishing up.
Transition reasons.
Yeah.
So if the motion could also indicate that this appointment will be effective on January the twelfth. Any objection?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor of the mo, or any other discussion, comment? I think, was there a second of the motion?
Yes.
Seconded. Is there discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
We wish Ms. Morrissey the best.
And she did tell me if she's appointed, she will resign as tax assessors clerk.
Yes.
That would be effective if they take the position. So then we would vote for her. The old.
They discuss that with Carrie.
And Carrie will be part of that process as well, and she anticipated this might happen. She's willing to. This is more of a quiet point in the year for her, and so she hopefully can move along on her own for a while. I suspect, given the inter-office communication and support that occurs here that I see on a regular basis, if Carrie needs any assistance, I know she will get it. Won't she?
Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are we going to move ahead and post for vacancy number four?
We have to wait for it.
You have to wait.
Yeah, I've been speaking with Carrie, she's not, we can do that in December.
Okay.
Yeah, she's okay, and we can post.
Multitask.
Well, it's good. Moving to public hearings. I'll entertain a motion. I'll actually make the motion that we convene as the Exeter Board of Liquor License Commissioners. Yeah, we'll convene, we'll convene as that board. And that's a motion. There's a second.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, I'm speaking slowly so I can get my, with the license folder out here. First Class A license renewal application. Oh, does that, once we begin as a board, is that that we're looking for hearing?
Mr. President, I move that we open the public hearing.
Sure. Now that we convene, now we'll hear it. Hear this. And there's a motion in?
Second.
Second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Now let's look at these two licenses, Class A, Exeter Wine and Spirits, Wolf Rock Wine and Spirits. We have the applications before us. Is anyone who wishes to speak? Look at license renewals. Thank you. It wasn't always that way, but things are good these days. Any questions regarding these? Madam Clerk, what is the status?
Exeter Wine and Spirits, hasn't had state clearance as of today, and Wolf Rock is all set.
Both of these are renewal applications, so I don't think you'll anticipate an issue as yet. However, however, if there is, they won't be issued.
Right.
So I assume we can issue subject completion during the course of our convenings as the board. You don't have to close a public hearing, do we?
No.
Entertain a motion that we approve those two Class A license renewals, subject to completion of all required documentation.
Second.
And second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Voted the Class BV. Well, this is all, it's all part of a public hearing. It's idle.
Yeah.
It's all a hearing, and we're sitting as the Board of Liquor License Commissioners. Now, you see that we have one, two, three, and four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Of those Class BV, liquor and lit, combination licenses, they are all renewals. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the current status, please, Madam Clerk?
They're all set, except Effie's Pizza and Low Country Pizza. They both did not have state clearance as of today.
You don't anticipate that's being held up? They just didn't present it to you, is that correct?
The Division of Taxation hasn't provided clearance yet. So they're working with them.
Working with them. And they're all renewals, so one would assume that time run differences, they will have their clearance. And these licenses, by the way, for the public's information, are in place until December first, but we move on here in November because we're not needing until that. Happens to be December second this year, but it's not always. Sometimes it's three, four, or five. And we used to have businesses going without a license for a few years, so we're trying to look at that. Any questions? Entertain a motion that those be approved, subject to law paperwork being submitted.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And still convening as the Board of License Commissioners. Entertain the item four, the liquor license cap, which is currently at thirteen. I would entertain a motion that that cap be remain in place after.
Second.
And, oh, that would be a motion then, and a second. That's discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, so voted. And that concluding our business. Would someone care to make a motion that we adjourn?
Move that we close the hearing.
Close the hearing and adjourn.
Please, Madam, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Second.
Madam Clerk will make whatever appropriate notations in the minutes that we have closed the public hearing and we are adjourned as the Board of Liquor Licensing Commissioners. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just keep going, circle that stuff, guys. Don't look at me like that. Moving on to D. Now, please, Jeff, item, item eight, D, is a community development block land program, annual application process.
I thought you retired last year. I used to be there.
Hi, Jeff. Jeff, introduce some of these folks for the record. You are consulting now?
Jeff Martin, retired, consulting to the.
Jeff Martin, retired, consulting to the Washington County CDC, the executive director of that organization, which manages the block grant program, has to be in Westwood at the same time. I'm trying to get up to you, but you moved extraordinarily quickly through your licensing, so you may not get it. Anyway, I'm here.
I beg your pardon. Someone else was coming?
Alice Buckley is actually the director.
Right, of course, we've met Alice.
Yes.
And now you're telling me I move so quickly that she isn't here?
She, I told her I was coming, so she was going to make every effort.
I, we...
But you can't be in two places.
He's been doing this here for many years, in different capacities, but always CBBG.
Always.
And, yes, and Madam Clerk would like us to move to open the public hearing. Would you like to do that?
I'll make a motion.
And motion is made and seconded. We open the public hearing. You consider our application for CBBG funding for the current and next fiscal year? You don't have to what?
I'm going to rise, okay?
You don't have to rise. Just try to tell us.
I had a 70th birthday just about a week ago, so...
Well, many happy weekends.
Right.
Many happy weekends.
All right, what's evolved over time, you're probably used to an annual application where we come in for housing rehabilitation and all the nonprofits that want to create money clients.
They're not, because it's new for them, but for Dan, yes, for us, they have to tell us.
What's happened is the state has created two levels of application. Right now, we're in a rolling application that actually affected the open door first is for housing rehabilitation set aside money, housing, affordable housing preservation and creation, and economic development. In May, starting in March, actually, there will be a general application for nonprofits to come to you with a request for money in a general application round. That would include homeless resource, lump shelter, education exchange.
The organizations we've typically supported.
Yeah, they may, you know, we don't need to be overly involved in that right now. Right now, we're in front of you, the public hearing, on an application for housing rehabilitation set aside, which is actually a $0 application that creates a line item in a contract for which money can be put house by house. So if we get an application, fully develop that application, send it to the state of Rhode Island, they award cost of the rehab plus up to 20% for operating expenses, and by contract amendment, they start putting money in that line item. So that is basically how the housing rehabilitation program works. You guys still operating, and once it's the same way, loans, no interest, no interest preferred, depending on family circumstances. Also before you tonight is an Habitat, an Habitat, an application for Habitat. Do you know what happens when you give a...
Way ahead of you.
Application for Habitat for Humanity for the support of construction of a single-family home on Darnell Road at Ten Roger. Colin Penny's here. If you have any questions, you can. So that's what we're here for. You have the packet?
Yes, you have the packet and Ashley did sign where she needed to sign. That was page two.
I will point out, should the applications be approved, the council authorizes Cal Ellis as council president, acting in all matters that arise from this application and funding awards from it. Habitat's application as an affordable housing creation application is a tad more complex than housing rehabilitation, so Colin and Washington County CDC to work together to fully flesh out that application. Prior to going to you for signature, Cal, we will contact you, should approve, relatively recently, CBBG.
You mean should the council approve?
Should the council, of course.
Thank you.
That's all for your last question.
Yeah. From time to time, Jeff has said, there's more paperwork than you need to sign. I said, okay, I'll sign because I know you, but don't keep giving, he, don't let anyone else bring their paper and say, here, sign this, because I'm likely to call, like, the Vice President or someone else and say, I just do this because we moved through it, and you're going to vote to approve, and then you're going to tell me what I need to do to move this forward.
Fully explain it, of course.
Well, you know, it is, it is obviously more complicated than it used to be years ago. It was a pretty straightforward process, but like so many things, apparently, the government bureaucracy makes things ever more complicated, but thank you for assisting. Can you introduce the gentleman? I don't know who he is.
Colin, Colin Penny, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of South County. A fine-upstanding gentleman.
And you're part of this process, obviously, because you are guiding, once money's approved, you're moving.
Yeah, we'll be the general contractor and as well as the mortgage holder of property.
And you must have had something to do with House Across the Street.
Yes, indeed.
Which was dedicated two or three weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yes. Yep, so we're waiting on the final CO, and we'll have a family in there soon.
That was a very, very nice piece in the paper, and also on TV. Thank you. Now, let's...
You had this old house down there, too, didn't you?
Yep, yep, this old house, the TV show was filming.
Don't ask me to sign that one.
No.
With these projects.
Thank you very much.
I know they're clearly worthwhile, and that night of the dedication caused a little bit of a, well, not a slight panic here, only because we thought it was going to happen a bit sooner. Did you postpone that for once or one or two weeks or anything? Because we got an early notice, but some people had kind of put that aside.
The things are always a moving target.
That's okay. Then we had a whole parking lot and road full of people just prior to being...
The lady in the room.
So I got a couple of parents, but it was all good.
Figured out before the meeting, so I appreciate yous a lot.
It's okay. Questions now, of general. Isn't it clear? Isn't it clear?
We're voting on two separate...
It's two, it's one application, two activities.
Two parts. So we can vote on it as one.
I think so.
Anyone who can vote to authorize Cal to sign?
Yeah, they used, back when it made a lot more sense, there was a resolution that the council agreed into the record. They're not using it anymore, so it's just, you know, you've got the information. The approval for the submitted application to the state of Rhode Island from the town of Exeter should include authorization for Cal to act as the agent for the town of Rhode Island to do that.
But we are approving that you go ahead and submit this on behalf of the town of Exeter. Is that correct?
I'm asking you to, yes.
No, but I mean, if we vote, yes, we're voting to authorize you to process the application.
Mr. President, is a motion in order?
I think it is, unless there's any question.
I move that we approve the application and also to authorize you to sign in the necessary documents as they come by your desk.
Second?
Second.
And now we can discuss the motion. A hearing, no discussion. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. And then I'll ask, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding the community development.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Jeff, it looks like you can continue to consult and continue to move it forward.
Thanks very much. We've been in touch with you after we pulled the whole thing over, so she understands what you're saying.
Yes, because you can ask for the sign, but I already told Maria, so it's all in order.
That's what we were just saying.
Thank you.
Joe, you were timed, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Can still catch the kickoff, I'm running out of time.
Thank you. Regarding new business? Regarding, yeah, we've worked with him for years. I met with him here, there, and all over the place, in different capacities, work right now. Item 9A, the annual Christmas tree lighting. Madam Clerk, you always help to orchestrate that with the assistance of the Public Works Director. What are you thinking?
Usually the day following Thanksgiving, so December 5th this year, six o'clock, I think we do it. Six o'clock?
Six.
So, once the council approves, we...
Have you been talking to Stan?
Yes, so...
I will.
And we're looking, we have a tree, we're looking for a tree.
We're always looking for a tree.
Always looking for a tree.
You might find a better one.
Okay. Yes, I think Haven should donate a lot of flowers.
I've got quite a few trees that she can look at, rip them down afield, so I saved about 12, let them grow through the years.
And this is to make it clear, this is a donation, is that correct?
That one is pulling out, it's like one of the reindeer was standing there near him, so...
Might be the one.
Yeah, good thing I had me.
That we know what he would have done otherwise. Well, if there's no other, let's, I'll move that we call the annual Christmas tree lighting party, whatever, procedure.
Festivities.
Festivities here on, at Thursday, December 5th, and ask that the Highway Department, Public Works Director and his crew assist, as you always do, so having said that, is a second.
Seconded.
Those are made and seconded. Discussion. Thank you, please.
Snow day.
No, snow day would be the main, because maybe it could snow. And thank you, in fact, you do donate, and thank you for the donation.
Probably.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Madam Clerk also asked that this be included under new business. That's the annual employee appreciation luncheon, which is usually held for Tuesday prior to Christmas, at least it has been in recent years. What are you thinking, Madam Clerk?
December 17th, that'll be after the tax quarter. And it's due Tuesday, so we'll get most, all the planes on that day.
What time is that, Lynn?
12:30.
12:30.
The 1:30 this year?
All the staff, the Public Works Department's invited to come for lunch, it's everybody that's working for the town.
Close the town hall video.
Okay. A motion to authorize the clerk to move forward of those plans?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. They'll authorize the clerk to move forward of plans for the annual employee appreciation luncheon on December 17th. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Regarding historical cemeteries, did he get David? I don't, did he come?
I don't think he's here, Mr. Thornley.
Okay. With regard to this historical cemetery issue, it hadn't remained on the agenda for quite some time. We picked it up, we put it back, only because we wanted to clarify what monies are available for any individuals. Man, you spoke, can you want to speak to this for us?
I actually, we texted back what we supposed to do some research, Cal, and he and I never hooked up. I was hoping he was going to be here tonight. I thought he was going to be here. Perhaps we can table this until next month, and I'll get in touch with Mr. Thornley, see what he found out and what his thoughts are.
And that's good. And I had spoken to Maria when we addressed this at a work session a week ago as well. There are certain monies set aside for, I'm really speaking, we all know this, I'm just speaking to you, to you, that gave hope your evening to be here. There are certain monies that have been set aside for perpetual care lots. There are 13 historic cemeteries in the town. Some of those are being maintained by the Public Works Department, and some of them are not so easy to access. And that particular question was one that isn't, I think it might be history, I think he said it was designated as a relative.
Yes.
I think he said it was designated as a historic cemetery, but not one of those for which there's set aside funding. So thanks, Man, let's continue. We'll move out to unfinished cases. But in that regard, I'd just like to go back to, since it's on the agenda, we had had a request back in January regarding the funding of a new cemetery with some money to be donated for potential care. And that came to us via the Chair of the Exeter Historic Association. We had not heard back regarding that, and I think I would just, because we're talking tonight, it's on the agenda, I would like to move to ask Madam Clerk if she would reach out again to Sheila Reynolds, remind her of the meeting, and we had asked if she would help to procure a letter of intent on the part of a person who was concerned that the, that's, the motion is just, you know what it is, to ask Madam Clerk to reach out to Sheila and ask, tell her we welcome the conversation, and if we could get that through. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. There's no other discussion we need, is there? You remember that that issue came to us. Hearing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Item G is placed on the agenda at the request of school community member Paul McFadden. Paul, we have some information you provided. Would you care to speak to that, please?
Thank you, Cal. So I asked this to be put on the agenda because as part of our annual kid count, because we participate in a regional school system, how expenses get a portion to the two towns that participate in the regional school district is based on the kid count. How many children from each town goes to the school system, and as part of that kid count, we do an inventory, and we say, yes, that individual and street address resides within the limits of the town of Exeter, therefore, it's legitimate to charge the town for a number of children that participate from Exeter in the school department, like why is West Greenwich participates in the same inventory process. As part of that process, there are group home children that reside in the town of The number is approximately eight or nine, depending on a particular year. The school department currently, as per the law, which I included in the package, 1664-1.1, gets reimbursement, the school department does, gets reimbursement through the Rhode Island Department of Education via DCYF. So DCYF, based on a formula that states an occupied bed in a group home will get reimbursed $17,000 per, to the school department, and therefore, a payment, a categorical payment, a term I do not like, is provided in the Rhode Island Department of Education's budget to the school department, which in this matrix is referred to as Group Home A, which is about, let's line it. 10, line 10, it says Group Home A. And at the top of the column, they have three fiscal years, and we're currently in fiscal year 2019 and 2020. And that amount of money for this year is $125,677. So in the budget that we're currently existing, running on, we have received, the school department has received $125,677. The kid... The kid, the kid count for the fiscal year had approximately eight or nine kids to get that number, so it's the number of children, nine seventeen thousand, and that's your group home aid, that comes from DCYF, that is part of the Rhode Island Department of Education funding to the EWG schools. So here comes what I thought was kind of a strange behavior that I could not answer too honestly. At this point, the state of, DCYF pays the school department for the presence of these children that they've identified into a particular group home, as they do for all the school departments. What the school department does is include in the child count...
The same nine kids.
The same number of children, so essentially, they charge us, the town of Exeter, for those nine children, or eight children, that are on, that are in the group home, for whatever the cost is. So let's say it's seventeen thousand, it's more than that, but let's just say it's seventeen thousand dollars. So they're actually collecting tuition twice for the same children. One from DCYF. Sorry?
From, the other one from the town.
And the other one from the town, for the same eight children.
The town pays per child.
Right. Now, strangely, as, so, remember, I only represent myself, this is not the opinion of the school committee as a whole, I've never brought to this, to the school committee, I am just one member. Uh, so at this point, what happens is, uh, what do they do with the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? How does the school department deal with that? Well, what they do is they knock off the total expense of education by that amount, along with the other categorical funding features that are in here, but they knock it off right at the top. They say, okay, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars comes right off the top. Both towns benefit equally by knocking off a hundred and twenty-five thousand right at the top, right? Because they're bringing down the total cost to the towns by that amount. Then they apportion out the cost, which includes, for our purposes, the eight children from the group home. That's in Exeter. There's only one group home between the two towns, there used to be more, but about four years ago, West Greenwich had those removed from West Greenwich. So this is a practice that's been going on for quite a while. The law changed in two thousand and sixteen, that said, reimbursement will be a, a portion to occupied beds in group homes via DCYF. The law changed, there was a formula. That is in this law, that, I was directed to that law by the Rhode Island Department of Education, and the individual that I spoke to there, that's in the email that I provided you, June. So now, what's happening is, West Greenwich benefits from the revenue stream, from group home revenue, but we only get the bill. Does that make sense to the committee? Do you have any questions? I'm going to pause for a second.
Doesn't sound fair.
No, we're being double billed.
Right, and so, it is a practice, because at one time, the law was written differently, and there used to be group homes in both West Greenwich and Exeter. But, at the same time the group homes closed in West Greenwich, the law changed. That said, hey, we're going to start applying a formula, so you know exactly what to expect from group home aid, and it's based on the number of children that are in the group home that are occupying in those beds. And that has accurately been reflected in this budget over the last three years. So as the number of children either increase or decrease, so is the apportionment that's in the group home aid. So, um, this anomaly that I kind of recognized, um, would suggest that perhaps we should not really count the children who are wards of the state. DCYF, a state agency, identifies the individuals that go to a particular group home. By the way, none of these children are residents of Exeter, in other words, their parents are not residents of Exeter, they come from Pawtucket or Innsoka, wherever they come from, so they're not residents of Exeter, we acknowledge that.
Nor West Greenwich, Jack.
Nor West Greenwich, correct. All of these children come from other parts of the town, uh, other parts of the state, which is not really relevant, and this is all part of a common practice. But the just, the interesting part is the fact that the s- school department is charging as, for these children that technically are already getting subsidized by the state. Now, um, now, where, the kid count that we just went through is for a proposed budget that hasn't even written yet. So, we currently have an active budget that reflects a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The kid count inventory that we just went through was for the proposed budget that's coming out in February. That is hypothetical at this point. So we're entering a kid count, we have these children that are in a group home, the state is providing the, the school department, uh, a stipend as, and then they're charging us because they say, these children are in Exeter, they have beds, here they are, and we look at the count, and we say, yeah, that street's in Exeter, there are eight kids there, and we give them money for them, but they're also getting money from the state. Now, I also don't want to be accused of not telling the whole story, okay? So I also included the actual cost for these children that are in the, that are in the school department. None of these children actually physically go to the school. They are, require one-on-one services, and they are outsourced. And when you have children that have an IEP and they're outsourced, the costs associated with that are considerable. So I looked at this. And I don't find a piece of paper. There it is.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the last piece of paper, you have the actual costs that are associated with the children. And these numbers are, so when, when a child has an IEP, an independent educational plan, they do not charge back to the town the actual real amount, it's the tuition that we get charged, the tuition which is like eighteen ninety thousand dollars per, right? So, if a student came from Exeter, they had an independent educational plan, right? And it actually costs fifty thousand dollars, they don't send us a bill for fifty thousand dollars for the child that has an IEP. It's all part of the eighteen thousand dollar tuition that they send to all, that, that we pay for all the children that we send to the school department. Now, when it comes to these children, they are quite afflicted, and if you look, some of the numbers are like ninety-eight thousand, hundred thousand, hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-six thousand. Total exposure for the children that are in the group home for the, the town of Exeter is eight hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars, which is not relevant to this discussion necessarily, other than I don't want to be accused of not letting you aware of the fact that the costs associated with the children at the group home is much higher than just the tuition that we pay, and the state pays. So, this has been the practice forever, but the law changed in two thousand and sixteen, the group homes in West Greenwich went away, West Greenwich benefits from the revenue as does Exeter, but we are the only ones that get the charge for the kids that live in Exeter, which makes sense. Except, it's a double charge.
When it comes to the budget, well, this number has to be, the kid count has to be certified by the end of October, Mary, you do it, don't you?
It's already been done.
It's already certified.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's including the one that they're getting, well, they're getting aid, it's actually a reimbursement.
Reimbursement, exactly.
But they call it aid.
It's reimbursement, it's reimbursement. But, if we live in one of the thirty districts that don't have a regional school district, this would not be a problem, there would be one accounting department. All the money would go to the, to the one city or town, it's a non-issue.
Yeah.
But, because we participate in a regional school district, right? There are three accounting departments, the money goes directly to the accounting department of the school department, right? And, and that's where the process sends out the kid count based on their attendance at the beginning of the year to, to the town of Exeter and West Greenwich, for us to verify the addresses where the children live. So in other words, there have been occasions where we say, that street is not in Exeter, it's in West Greenwich, these children on that street should be charged to the town of West Greenwich. There have been instances where that's occurred. This is slightly different in that we have wards of the state, we have wards of the state in our town that the state is giving us, the school department, money for, and they in turn charge it for those children that reside at that residence.
So, so, if I can interrupt you, Paul, I think we, we've got it, and it's an interesting issue, are you here to propose a motion, or just bring it up for discussion?
So, so when it comes to solutions, and I'm a single member of the school committee, right? That's a little bit of a compromise. I have some solutions, but as I do not, as I am not bringing in an opinion that has been reviewed by the whole school committee, it makes me a little bit of a, brings a little trepidation to my voice, yes, of past practices for, for Mr. McFadden. But one suggestion that I'll stop on, and I might say, well, if they're wards of the state, perhaps they should not belong part of our count.
Isn't that a function of the school board, rather than the council, or are you just trying to plant a seed for further support?
What, the kid count?
Whatever, whatever you believe the solution should be, it isn't...
Uh, you're responsible for the kid count for your town, so in other words, the town of Exeter is responsible for your kid count. So when it comes to the dis, the, the validation of those numbers, which eventually turns into a bill in January or February for the next tax season, right? That's the town's responsibility.
Well, I would think one solution would be eliminate those children from that kid count.
Completely.
Right.
And, and how do we do that?
I, well, I think, in my opinion, I think he's brought it to the council to make us aware of that, and to make that aware to the school committee, I think is the process.
Wouldn't that be a state law, isn't that governed by state lawmaking, who's counted? I just don't know which is the correct forum is to get this done.
Well, they are, they are changing some of that. In the future, and this is just recently, in the future, when a child comes here from, let's say, Cotton Tree or some other place, because very few...
It's supposed to build that town, right?
Very few group homes. I think we're one or two in the state that have these kids with this many problems. But they, in the future, when a child comes to Exeter, West Greenwich, uh, it will totally be paid for by the town they come from, but the ones we have existing in the beds, we have to pick it up. So that will slowly change, but if you don't, if you still have that in the kid count, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
It gets, it's going to get dicey as we move forward.
Are you looking for us, what are you looking for us to do? Can I, can I simplify it in that, in that term?
Yeah.
So...
Bring it to your attention.
Yep.
For the most part.
Okay, cleaning the seat, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so, so your participation at this point in the kid count is that the bill hasn't actually been, uh, solidified by the school department yet, because the budget doesn't exist this year.
It won't until...
I'm talking about, this year's kid count reflects a hypothetical budget that has not been either written, or proposed, or voted on.
So it's not available right now?
The, the kid count.
No, the, the budget.
Correct, but the kid count, you're in the process of, basically, you've submitted some numbers, you say, these addresses are in the town of Exeter, wishing included the group home kids, okay? So, um, you may want to think about, if you don't want to pay, you're saying, if you agree that the money that comes from the state is intended to reimburse the town of Exeter, right? And you don't want to have to get the money from the school department as a reimbursement, you may say, these children are wards of the state, they should not be charged to the town of Exeter, because the state is already paying the school department seventeen thousand dollars tuition to the school department. And you're already asking on top of that, another twenty thousand, which we don't do anywhere else, you know? We're not, so, I, I, the simple thing would be reduce the kid count by the, the group home children, and since this is the first time you'd be invoking that kind of process, because this adds up, gentlemen, this has been going on for four years, and if, if, this adds up to three hundred and more thousand dollars, right? But I'm not proposing that you guys go back and ask them for that. I am merely saying, we're in a kid count season right now, and going forward, we're going to be a very benevolent school, uh, town, and we're going to say, you know what, this is what you've done in the past, okay, right? You know, I understand that, but moving forward, right? You really shouldn't charges for these children that are wards of the state, that you're already receiving a tuition from DCYF that comes through the Rhode Island Department of Education as a category. So the Rhode Island Department of Education touches this money momentarily, that comes from DCYF, with, whose intent is to serve as reimbursement for these children participating in our school system, right? And to Diane's point, moving forward, just to make it even more confusing, they are attempting to get the IEP money as well. So, in other words, if the city of York sends us a child, and we outsource them for eighty thousand dollars, they're attempting to create legislation to get the eighty thousand dollars, which is the actual cost from the city of York, but again, that would be total cost, and again, we should be charged for these kids when we eventually get the eighty thousand, right? This is a very difficult concept.
Yeah, I, I'd like to speak to this for a minute, Paul. Uh, and Mary, to your point, when Paul approached Lynn and asked Lynn to place this on the agenda, I suggested to Lynn, it really doesn't come from a member outside of the council. So Paul and I spoke, I said, Paul, if I don't put this on the agenda for our consideration, you certainly have other, four other members of the council that you can approach. So I said, no, I'll put it there, Paul, we talked for a while. I said, Paul, to your point, what, what is it that you would expect from us, since it's the school district's funding process? And so he's now articulating some thoughts that he has about what we might do, but I would like to speak to something, you, you, Diane spoke to this new legislation that I see here, that I believe is adopted. You just said it was attempting to be put into effect, I thought you said that, but it does...
Well, they haven't put the real writing into it, yeah.
Right, so when I called Rhode Island Department of Ed and spoke to the individual on this matter, they are attempting to get the agreement of cities and towns that would be impacted by us sending them a bill for eighty thousand dollars. Imagine, if you're the city of York, you're sitting there, and you're saying to yourself, I got a bill here for eighty thousand dollars because Exeter decided that kid had to be outsourced.
And Paul, if the state has mandated that that child be living here in Exeter, wouldn't the state be billing the town to reimburse us? Why would it be the district's responsibility? I mean, you speak about the eight hundred plus thousand.
Sure.
But eventually, from what I understand, once these people that are there now age out of the, of the building of the group home, new entry and entrance people are, are going to come in under this new guideline.
Sure.
From what I'm told. Now, are you saying that isn't in place yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so that's...
I, I, I think the, the rub is, when these...
Now, I'm not saying that, excuse me, that doesn't fix today's problem. I, I see this as an attempt to resolve what has been inappropriate, when you say the state gives for each student seventeen plus thousand.
Right.
And some of the students cost a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and twenty-six.
Yes.
Clearly, the state doesn't cover the burden. Clearly, the state doesn't cover the burden. And so it seems to me this is an attempt. And I'm told that the superintendent here in the district helped put quite a great deal of effort into fixing this going forward. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I think, I think some credit needs to be given because others have recognized apparently what you've come to us with, that there's some discrepancy here in the way it works. I know it doesn't deal with the kid count. That's what you're here for. I understand that.
Right. So, but I, I think that we, as much as I understand, they actually haven't gotten to the point where they agreed that's how it's gonna work. In other words, if a child comes here and we say, they need an I E P that's gonna cost a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Where did they come from? The city of Warwick? I'll send them the bill for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That's where the City of Warwick is at. Really? So I, I think that is proposed. It hasn't passed. Once that does happen, then for sure, these children shouldn't show up on our kid count, right? But right now, I still believe they shouldn't show up on the kid count. Because even though there's an I E P with all of these children, the tuition that covers the I E P additional funds is, is still covered by the state through D C Y F, through the Rhode Island Department of Education. But like I said, they're coming to us and we've been asked to pay because they reside in Exeter, right? None of them come from Exeter. They reside in Exeter. They're part of the kid count today, but the state does give us tuition for them. Which is very similar to what the actual cost is, seventeen thousand dollars from the state.
Well, Paul, what we're saying, the current situation, barring this not happening, at least not yet, we should take some kind of initiative to correct the situation. And I think it probably has to be done at the school district. I would make some recommendations for the town to our representatives, position.
So I don't know how you'd communicate that. I don't know if the council would create a communication. Because if I start representing the school committee as a whole, I'm gonna get slapped so bad.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
When this issue comes up before the school district, can you, can you let us know? And the council will take it up and will prepare a communication with our support. It sounds like something that should be fixed.
I was thinking that you guys would initiate this.
That's what I said. But just, just when it, it's gonna come up before the school committee...
Eventually.
Yes.
Unless, unless the communication that is read by the, the administration of the school department agrees with you, it doesn't have to come before the school committee.
All right.
But what do you think is gonna happen?
So, Mr. President, I don't know if you think it's needed to be put in the form of a motion for the council to vote or take it up now.
You know, I, I consider anything. But when, Paul, when you say if, if the communication's addressed to the school committee chair, you're suggesting now that it doesn't get to the school committee chair if it's not addressed to them?
No, no, no. I, I was...
Well, what did you mean when you said the administration will look at the letter and ignore it?
There's the school committee, right, which is seven people.
I, I understand how it operates, Paul, please.
And then the administrations. So my suggestion is that the, the town council would go to the, the administration of the school department, say, here's our dilemma. Do you agree with our findings in at that point? Because it's an official correspondence from the town council. They'd say, look, this is, they put it on the agenda, because I put it on the agenda. It would come before the school committee and there, there would be a debate. And I would insist on a vote. And if it doesn't carry...
No, I understand. That isn't quite the way you put it. I mean, I understand it's a vote of, there are seven people on the committee and there are two or three of you. I understand that.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one last thought. I see, I'm holding in my hand what says sixteen dash, sixteen dash sixty-four dash one, residency of children for school purposes. And, and it purports here to be adopted somewhere as a new statute. But you say it hasn't been put into effect yet. Is that correct? I mean, you said it, you, you say it hasn't been put into place.
The thing that I put in your...
Okay. I have another communication.
Yeah, okay. You may have another communication that I don't know about.
Well, I just cited, are you looking at that piece of legislation?
No, I don't have, I don't have.
Sixteen dash sixty-four dash one?
I have the one that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. That's the one I have.
And that's what I'm talking about here. Mike, you see, I had asked Mike, he's the liaison in the school department.
Right.
So I forwarded to him and asked him if he could ask some questions. And he has.
This is the new, like, highlighted version that went out from Jim.
Okay, no.
It's like the same.
No, it's not the same. This is currently on the law, the one that I have here. If you go to their website, this is it. There is a proposed change.
This is the proposed.
That's the proposed one.
So this hasn't gone in?
That's right. That's right. That's the one that's under debate. That's the one that goes after the I E P money, right? So in other words, when it's eighty thousand bucks, you gotta stick it back to Warwick and then you gotta come up with eighty thousand dollars for the school department. That hasn't passed.
And it hasn't been adopted.
Hasn't been adopted. You go to the Rhode Island, if you go to the Rhode Island general or somebody, you go on the laws, this is what you gotta find.
If you follow the link that was in that email.
Well, this is what, this is what comes out.
That's correct.
Well, in my opinion, we have to regress what's happening now. Because that may, may not happen. I would think the city of Warwick and the other urban communities are gonna have more clout at the legislature than we could.
I, I, if I was a betting man, I wouldn't think, I, I think there's gonna be debate and they're gonna say, hey, we can just take that kid in here and we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on the kid. Whereas our school department says, oh, no. When we have this kid, we're gonna send him out for eighty grand. I mean, that's the debate between, between school departments. And then state says, well, unfortunately, that kid lives in a group home that's in the town of Exeter. Here's the bill for eighty grand. What do you wanna do with it?
Mr. President, may I make a suggestion? In the interest of moving, we, we moved along because we've heard the information. It's, it's certainly a matter we should consider. May I suggest that we put it on unfinished business, perhaps discuss it individually?
Decide in December.
Yes.
How we wish to respond to the issue.
Yes. There's a lot of information being provided and I'd like to look into it more before we do that. So I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Do you think, you think maybe it works better? Because we've got the holidays coming up.
Well, here's, let's do this. Let's put it on the December agenda. In the meanwhile, if we can, if we can have a work session during this month, we can address it then as well. But here we are in public session, so let's move it to December. If we don't wanna act on it then, we do decide to act, we can do it if we're not ready. We can continue. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Last thought, yes, Paul?
So why I came here is not about the I E P money or the proposed new legislation. It's the kid count.
We got that.
Okay. All right. That's all I can say.
And my last thought, as we discuss it, is the eight hundred plus thousand. That's shared by both towns, is it not? So I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that Exeter is paying eight hundred and some thousand because the kids live in their Exeter group home. I would not want that to be the impression.
No.
Nor would you, Paul.
No, I would not.
So we might have to make that...
I agree with you completely, Paul.
And that the reimbursement of this from the state is not nearly significant to cover what it costs the district.
Even if you add in our seventy-two thousand on top of it. All right. Yes, I agree.
Motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Discussion further. None? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Paul, we'll see what we can do in December. Let's move to, Stefan, talk to us, please, regarding the hazard mitigation plan update and how we need to bring it to its closure.
Yes. First off, thank you. I'd be remiss if you just bear one second. We wanted to acknowledge Director Matt Chep, Chief Scott Gavitt, and Captain Charlie Franklin for their extraordinary effort with the storm this past weekend. There's a lot of damage and they were very instrumental, especially D P W in helping get things back up and running. And I'd also like to make a second acknowledgement to Chief Scott Gavitt and the Exeter One volunteers that assisted Captain Franklin in Exeter Two. They were in command of an extraordinary rescue effort that occurred yesterday in Arcadia Park with Rhode Island D E M and Hope Valley Fire District. It was quite an extraordinary effort and they were able to extricate a victim in rapid time. So with that being said, every community is responsible for having a hazard mitigation plan as part of their overall identifications for fixing potential hazards that exist within a community, be it due to growth, climate change now. And as a result, every five years, it's to be reviewed and updated. Since two thousand and ten, when I took over, our last or our current plan that's legally adopted is two thousand and five. As a result, I've been working diligently with Ken Finley to go through and updating it. As we have been updating it on our own, the template has been updated twice in the middle of that process. We have now aligned it with the comprehensive plan. And as a result, we're in a position where we have all the pieces. It needs to be brought together into a template. And Rhode Island E M A, working with Director Mark Tappas and Melinda Hopkins, has made notice, we applied for and received a grant in order to, for lack of better terms, bring this home. It was awarded to us last week. And I'd like to ask that we go through the steps of putting together R F P so we can get a contractor in here to assess, excuse me, assist Ken and I in order to complete this plan and get it to the state for approval. The overall importance to this is that this will put us in a better grant cycle with the rest of the communities of the state. Right now, we're being held back because we don't have an updated one. They recognize what we currently have, but it needs to be updated. And all this information is to prove pertinent as we move into the next phase of FEMA grant cycles over the next five years.
Do you, do you think the, the grant will cover most of the expense? Or if it doesn't, I know you left a question.
It will absolutely cover all of it. There is a chain down my line.
With regard to developing the R F P, is it something you and Ken would be doing in concert? Or is there something already...
I could, I could work with Ken to do that.
Is it something, is not something already in place? You would just create an R F P?
For the most part.
I think there's probably quite a few models up there.
Probably already, I was gonna say, that's been done. So you're not necessarily having to reinvent it. Or you should be able to find something that works and exercise it.
Yes.
Well...
You need motion for that?
You've heard the request, yeah.
I, I move to, to allow it to be, Mr. President, as I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded to place forbid asking for a consultant to assist in completing the hazard mitigation plan. Is that a fair assessment of what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Discussion? Thank you again for, for both you and Ken for bringing this, trying to move it forward. You have been moving it forward. Now you wanna put the finishing touches on it, is that correct?
I'm gonna wrap it up and go to the board.
Good, good. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I meant to acknowledge at the beginning of the meeting what happened during, following the storm and how the highway department, public works had, according to Steve, all the roads that had been closed by trees opened by Friday afternoon. Some, some were waiting for power lines issues, but as far as trees that were down, done. So for everyone to work in concert to get that done. And to you, Stefan, when you called me and said, you've been over here next door all night during this storm. So I said, just go home with you and get some sleep.
Always been funny to be here.
Well, thank you. And Steve, thank you for what you and your department did. The audit report, yes, Madam Treasurer, come talk to us. Bring, bring the crew with you. That's going to tell us what they're doing.
So I'd like to introduce Mike and Sean Meng. They were the auditors for Nato Waterwick, who is our auditors and the final audit next time. So they are our auditors right now.
You had a three-year conference or two-year conference?
Yes. And so they, they've completed the audit and they would like to present it.
We'd like to have it presented. Thank you.
As Maria said, I'm Michael Stent and this is Johnny Buzelwood from the audit firm, Nato Waterwick. We're here to present the town's financial statements for the year end June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Now, it's been a long night, so it'll be about an hour. I'm kidding.
Good thing.
Overall, as you guys kind of know, some of you've been on the council before and some in the past. The overall report is relatively large.
What happened? He was kidding.
The overall report is relatively large. So what we provided you guys is a summary of about ten pages of the report that are actually of the most importance.
A small pack.
Correct.
Not the sixty.
Not, yeah, just the... So if you turn to the first page, this is our independent auditors report. This is a standard letter that goes with the financial statements provided for the town that pretty much outlines what the town's responsibilities were, Maria's, as well as the council's, as well as ours. Of this report, if you turn the page again at the top, the most important paragraph is the opinion. This is our opinion, as we see it on the town's financial statements. Our opinion for this current audit was a clean or unmodified opinion, meaning there was no discrepancies, no issues that we noticed when we performed the audit. If we turn the page again, I'm just gonna touch on this one paragraph. What the town also receives is called a gas audit. We didn't provide it, but it is in the back of the original packet we provided. A gas audit means that while we're also performing an audit of the town, we do kind of a compliance audit, look at the town's internal controls and stuff like that. Again, there was a clean and unmodified opinion. There was no issues we saw during our audit. So if we turn the page again, this is the town's balance sheet. We're gonna primarily focus on the general fund for purposes as that's where the council does all their budgeting and that's where the majority of the activity is. There is a calling here for landfill closure. It's just considered a major fund under the requirements of GasBing Gap. So that's noted as its own separate. The non-major other governmental funds are primarily the town's special revenue accounts, capital projects, stuff like that. In the larger report, the detail for those specific accounts are on pages forty-six through fifty-three. So getting into the general fund and assets, the town had cash of roughly three point nine million dollars. There was some property tax receivables of about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. There was a small intercompany receivable of about forty-one hundred dollars. And there's some tax title property receivable of about fifteen thousand. Coming into the liabilities, the town has some outstanding obligations, payables and accrued items of about two hundred and twenty thousand. There is some amounts due to some other funds, primarily the special revenue and capital projects of about one point five million. There's an amount due to an agency fund, the shorty bond, of a hundred and five thousand. And there's some other liabilities related to the tax title property of about fifteen thousand. As we come into the next line item, there's some unavailable revenue, or also known as deferred revenue, for the property taxes of about two hundred and forty-four thousand. As we come down to the next section, your fund balance. Overall, the town has a fund balance of about two point two million. You know, of that fund balance, approximately eleven percent represents your current year property tax collections. You like to see that number around ten to fifteen. So you guys are right in that range. You're a little bit on the lower range, but you're right in the range. Because ultimately, what you have is your fund balances. It allows you to use the money if you need it in a pinch. It's not necessarily surplus, but it's cash available.
Cash flow, that's the key.
So we don't have to borrow.
Correct.
Correct. As we turn the page here, we come into your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Overall, for the general fund, the town collected about fifteen point eight million dollars of revenue this year. Of that amount, the largest is property taxes, which is about fourteen point three. And that represents about ninety-one percent of the total. There is some other amounts in here for your intergovernmental revenues, your departmental revenues, license permits, stuff like that. Overall, the town has total expenditures of fifteen point three million. Again, the largest is your education expense, which is twelve... Again, the largest is your education expense, which is 12.1. That actually represents about 80% of your total expenditures. That is clearly the town's largest expense line item and has been for the last probably 10 years. As we turn the page, you have some excess revenues over your expenditures of about $550,000. The town has some financing sources and uses. This is primarily what the town budgets to transfer between its special revenues and capital projects, the highway, public works, roads, and stuff like that. So overall, you had a net change in the fund balance of about $81,000, so it was an increase to your fund balance for the year. On the next page, this is a very summarized version of your budget actual in the larger report on pages 41 through 44. There's a lot of further detail broken out how you guys actually budget line item. I would suggest the council look at those pages. That'll give you, you know, per line item what you have. Overall, the town budgeted about $15.7 million of revenues and they collected $15.8, so it's about $100,000 positive over the budget. In terms of expenditures, the town budgeted about $15.3, or $15.4, they only spent $15.3. So again, they were under budgeted by about $100,000. Sean May is gonna get into just a few of these reasons for positive variances.
All right. So for the revenues portion, the two that I chose to discuss are departmental revenues and building permits and inspection fees. So for departmental revenues, there was a positive variance of almost 40 grand, and that was due to the planning board fees that were over budgeted by almost 40 grand as a result of increased developmental projects by the taxpayers. And then the second one I chose to discuss in detail was building permits and inspection fees, and this was over budgeted by $35,000 almost, and this was due to licenses and permits that were over budgeted by almost $35,000 as a result of an increased construction by taxpayers due to a stable economy and increased housing market. And moving on to the expenses, the two that I chose to discuss are general government and public works. Public works, as you see, is the largest. It's almost about 70 grand, and this was due to salaries being under budgeted and a worker being on retirement and a temporary vacancy, and also a worker being on workers' compensation. And also, that includes overtime of highway workers, which was under budgeted due to a mild winter season last year. And then for the general government on the expenditures side, they are under budgeted because of temporary vacant positions and employees changing their insurance, medical and dental plans from family to individuals.
Which helped lessen their insurance cost. Yeah. We're gonna skip the next page. Oh, we shouldn't include that. So the next schedule you guys are gonna see is the property tax receivable. We put this in there because we think it's a good idea for the council to review it. It shows ultimately for the year what your property taxes collected were by year. So as you can see in the seventh column from the left, the current year collections of your $14.4 million collected, $14 million represents property taxes that were billed up for '18, '19, the year that we audited. There is, the next largest is 2017, which is clearly the delinquent taxes that came in, and there it trickles down. You guys do get some delinquents. Kim and Maria do a good job of tracking down any delinquent taxes and trying to collect them. I think overall, the collection rate is around 97% in terms of collections for the taxes, whether current or prior. And as we turn the page, the last little schedule we have in the financials here is your schedule of long-term liabilities. Maria loves this schedule, and it's actually, over the eight years I've been doing the audit, has significantly decreased. Exeter does a very good job of not trying to take on a lot of new debt, and they've also taken on a standpoint, the council, of buying vehicles and other things outright, which helps save the town some money because you're not paying as much on interest when you're taking on a lease, a five- to seven-year lease.
There's a lady with a whip that stands very close to the council.
I twist a lot of arms to get this, the financials really there. No, we have AC in the summer, you know, everybody suffers.
But in terms of your debt, I mean, you guys have two leases. One was paid off this year, and you have one paid off next year. And in terms of your bonds, between the two of them, I think they're fully paid off in 2023.
I forgot, didn't I?
Go wait first.
I don't know how many municipality budgets or finances you order, but I mean, this has to...
In terms of debt, you guys are one of the lower ones.
Say that again?
In terms of debt, the town of Exeter is one of the lower ones that we do audits for.
And what about collection rate? You've gotta say that's pretty good.
Correct. It's one of the higher ones. I mean, in terms of, I mean, we don't do like some of the biggers like City of Providence and stuff, but I've looked, they're a lot lower. I don't even think they're in the 80s.
We were in the 80s and then early 1990s. So to the staff, to the people that are making the good things happen, the ones who don't play favorites, the ones who have their hand out every time somebody walks in.
Absolutely. Collecting.
But overall, that's our report. If there's any questions, you can let us know. And, you know, in terms of working with Maria, she's great. You know, she's very knowledgeable, and when we come in, she's ready. She gets us everything we need, she's easy to work with. If we have a request, she's always got the answer, so it was a pleasure to work with. And we hope going up to bid that we can continue this for enough three years.
Oh, you would consider continuing?
Yes.
And they are equally, it's nice to work with. They're wonderful, they respond immediately. I can always call them if there's, if we have any questions, which I do over the year, if there's any issues of making sure that we're doing things properly, you know, they're always one of the first people on my list to call. And even though you've had the report, you know, three days or so, continue looking at it. It's a long report, took a whole year to get to this point. So it's, you know, any questions at all, just next week.
I'm just looking at, be sure you look at a current report that you have, the first one, every second page that's skipped, but it's all good now?
I am doing it.
I know, I didn't say you can't, but make sure that you look at the report that has... It was double-sided, but it was quickly provided. Everyone wanted to be sure we had a copy for tonight, and when I was trying to review it, I kept, there are pages, it's okay, it's all fixed now.
It is a very long report, we tried to summarize it because there is a lot of footnotes and stuff, and a lot of that has not changed over the years, so.
Very good news.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to comment, the auditor is cannot treasurer.
We both, we all wouldn't work on ourselves.
Yes.
These are due, what you see by the end, December.
Correct.
And these people are, I can remember seeing you here in July, and I thought, it's okay, well, oh, the auditor is here already? Thank you for moving forward. Well, I'm ultimately accepting it as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion, other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being concise.
And it's been a lot longer.
I think I kept it to 15 minutes, I'm not sure, but...
Thank you very much. For those of you that are here to, for some of the unfinished business that we need to address next, thank you for your patience. These are important issues that we needed to address. Moving on to item 10, historic preservation, potential projects. Did you want to speak quickly to what we've discussed, Ken, please?
Yes. Well, I wanted to draft minutes, so I did contact Ryan Basson, Cape Cod Construction.
Is he gonna back me?
He doesn't back me yet, but he will be willing. I know it will come down on me and I'll go through the three buildings. So if I set up a date and a time, I'll notify whoever wants to come to go look at all three.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Yeah. Maybe somebody to get the bees out first. I'll send you in first, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you. Regarding workplace harassment training initiative, and this remains here because it's suggested that it's something we need to be sure that we do for the staff. Madam Clerk's been working to that goal?
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to wait till after January, after the holidays to do this, because I think trying to schedule it with the holidays and people taking vacations and everything will be kind of difficult to make it work well. So we could work this one out.
Probably, yeah. Get some dates through after the first of the year.
I'll check with the trust at the end of December, for the dates in January.
Thank you. Questions? Moving on, regarding the conference and division.
Thank you.
That's proceeding. The planner is brought on board, an intern is helping with updating the statistics, and that's a progress.
Right. So it is a work in progress, remains, and I believe that the, we can speak to that later, but I think Economic Development Task Force...
Right, Eric.
Is also addressing economic development or whatever you call that element.
The...
Right, but sometime they will be assisting to...
They are assisting.
Right.
Planner is working with economic development.
Right. The planner told me today that she planned to be getting an application in. Well, it's another, that other issue that's on the agenda. Get to the website. Yeah, is anything to add?
Yes, Mr. President, we'll be meeting again on the 14th. The five committee members and the town's IT Director, James Angie, were given homework in the form of looking over other towns of comparable size to Exeter, their websites, and looking over Exeter's website, making the determination what's good, what's bad, what's ugly. And eventually, we'll come to a prototype of the website, so I'd like to keep this on unfinished business and I'll provide a report next month as well.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Regarding the transfer station purchase, just for the record, it hasn't happened, but it's a work in progress and some final tweaking has needed to be done. Do you want to speak in any way?
Not really. If anybody has any questions, just give me a call. We're proceeding, Paul Salito's been very active, been in contact with the SARS attorney, and we're working through various issues, but I think it's more for this progress, so it hasn't been a stagnant month at all in terms of things.
Good, that's good. Regarding F, we need to leave this in place. We have not had a, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of one next, next one. Impact fees, Ken, any thoughts?
Yeah, because of the way that we decided that we're approaching, I contacted our consultant to see if he will provide us with a draft ordinance.
Okay. Because they do this all over the country.
He's done favor on the Rhode Island, one that he provides the old ones with, and then we just amend ours. One way or the other, he's gonna have to secure what he's right to not choose, not offer, not offer...
It's good, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
They did, I asked him how much it would cost, and he would say it could cost $5,000 if they were willing ours. So, well, boy.
Good. It needs to be done.
As soon as I get that, Jim, I'll send it in.
It's a work in progress, for sure. Now, regarding 10G, that also will move forward. We have not had word back from the planning board.
And as at the planning board meeting, we still have a difficulty coming to a consent design. And part of the problem is some, the language of the state, the state statute seems to be some conflict between the definition and the actual ordinance, and needs room for different ways of interpreting it. That's just part of it. Part of the problem, the other part of the problem is the policy should be, I suppose, demanding of us. So it's continuing.
Okay, and we will.
I can speak to that.
Did you, as a member of the planning board, Bill, did you want to say something about that?
The current state ordinance, revised state ordinance, is, makes that ordinance totally different than what was, the town of Exeter's idea. The dwelling, accessory dwellings in Exeter, primarily designed to help in-laws or maybe a kid that had a divorce and had a little problem, and the way it's been written by the state, it's a little bit rental. It's memory of family, but they're defining a family member in anybody, even if they can't speak English. So it takes a little bit of crafting to make our ordinance comply with the wording of the state's ordinance and still keep it as best we can for its original intent. So we're working on that now.
Thank you. Counsel or Treasurer, Maria, the next item regarding that self-doubt proposal from Matt and Greg, should we, should we hold it, keep it? I beg your pardon?
Remove it from the agenda.
Okay. Any concern on the part of any council members, whether or not we wish to consider this?
No, that's the second time that I've sent a note from them, so it will come back on its own.
Okay, and I know we'd ask, Maria, to have looked, but you don't see any reason now to pursue this, do you?
We'll have other opportunities if we want to. We'll have other opportunities we can...
Sure, sure. There's a suggestion, was the council object, should this be removed from the agenda?
No objection.
Any objection to having it removed? Hearing on Madam Clerk, please take note. We'll remove this from the agenda. When we go to the issue down the hill, which came before us before, we continue it here. We had a complaint last month. Has there been any further discussion? Mandy, have you talked with them at all?
I have not heard from Mr. and Mrs. Sadler. I know that they are not in attendance today. So I'm at a loss to say whether or not the traffic safety concerns that I raised have been ameliorated by the fact that Augie the Fox, or is it a dog? Dog. And the other mascot have been removed, and I wish the owners of the property were here because I thank them for having removed and worked with us. So without the Sadlers here to talk about whether or not traffic safety concerns have been abated or not, I think it's probably safe to remove this item from the agenda. However, before I would make that motion, I came across some information, and we had talked about this at a prior meeting on whether or not this building permit should have been issued in the first place. And the information that I've been provided seems to suggest that the building permit should not have been issued because of problems with the primary residence. Frank, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, I've taken a look at this too, to see why this has occurred in order to avoid such a situation again in the future. According to state statute and the Exeter zoning ordinance, accessory use shall not be permitted without the principal use to which it is related. A bond already exists on this site without a principal use, the principal use being a residence, because it's in a residential zone. There is no residence on the building, on this land. So my question is, does permitting the fish bond constitute a second violation of this ordinance? Appears that the first bond, the existing bond, is in violation and that this just continues to add a second violation. At least that's how I read the ordinance. Also, the owner stated at the last council work session that this was to be used as a farm stand. My question is, did the owner tell his zoning inspector at the time of his application of the zoning certificate, he let him know that it's intended to use as a farm stand? And if it was, a farm stand is limited to 200 square feet and requires development plan review by the planning board. According to the building grid, the floor space is 1,348 square feet without the basement. So it appears that there's several issues concerning the approval of this building on the site to begin with. And I'd like to sue that with the officials that were involved to see, to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't occur. Or correct me if my assessment is wrong.
And I agree with Councilman Dick Glorio, because we have a situation that, in my opinion, created public safety hazard... created public safety hazard because people stopping to take pictures. And not only that, it was a nuisance to the Saddlers across the street. And if you go by 102, you can see the extraordinary measures that they had to take to make sure that people didn't come by and park on their property and take pictures. So I agree with Frank that we should do whatever we need to do and hold anyone that's accountable so that this doesn't happen again. At least get their explanation as to why these permits were issued. I'm not sure how we go about that.
No, and I understand this conversation because the night we met with the gentleman and he spoke about hoping to sell, I immediately thought that this is a commercial venture and it needs appropriate permitting and it needs to be parking, needs to be taken into account, which doesn't appear.
That's why the planning board didn't get involved.
I understand. I, you know, meanwhile, the, well, I wondered if this should be forwarded just to DOT to indicate we had this complaint. I mean, so that, I'm not sure anything would happen, but they might look at that. It might be interesting to see if they might post a no parking sign, which they probably wouldn't and people would ignore it anyway. But I wondered if we would consider forwarding this, or would you think we should wait and?
If I'm not mistaken, the Saddlers have filed a complaint with DOT, with the state police, and sent a letter to the clerk, per Steve's recommendation, I believe.
Do you think they have done that?
I'm pretty darn sure they did.
They have a copy of what they sent to you.
We should follow up as we committed to that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know that they, that they already filed their own personal complaint. And that's okay.
Yes, and so I probably begin this by speaking in air, saying remove it. I think we should keep it on. And I think we should look into the officials who issued these permits and perhaps Frank and I can speak to them and provide the council with more information on how this happened next month. Is that okay with you, Frank?
Yeah. And we'll continue and move that forward. I have a moment. I think it's time to deal with the young ladies from Boon Lake. Hello.
Hi.
Once again, when I said I'm sorry, thank you for your patience, it was probably because I knew I'd see you come in and I know this is a significant issue for you.
Yes.
But these are the issues we needed to address as well.
We understand, we understand.
Here we are again.
So here we are again. So I'm gonna tell you right now, our EAP is completed. The Boon Lake Dam Management District did everything that they needed to do to get this completed. It's been submitted to Stephanie Peck. She has it. And she's going to take care of the rest of the work that needs to be done to fully complete it, to get it to the DEM. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of obstacles to get this done. And we did get our E911 sites. I know that Patty had told me last time I was here, just go on RIGIS. You can get them, just go on RIGIS. I spent three hours Monday, that Monday night that I left here, trying to get the information. Then I went down to Town Hall the next day and lo and behold, I got the information from Patty. But what bothers me the most about it is that information was already at the Town Hall when we were at this last meeting. I could have had the information, didn't have to be here at the last meeting. I could have been, that information could have been disseminated to us appropriately so that we could have just applied it to our emergency action plan, and that didn't happen. So when she said, just go on RIGIS, she already had it in her computer emailed to her from the EMA Director. So, you know, that's a little disconcerting. You know, we could have, we could have ended this whole, the whole story. So the plan is done. I would like to let you know that when I called Rhode Island Emergency Management and I spoke to Stephanie Peck, I asked her how many dams there were in Exeter and she said there were eight. I said, how many high hazard dams that need to have an emergency action plan in place? She said six. One belongs to the state, Browning Mill, five to private owners. I said, how many owners have submitted their, out of those five people, how many have submitted their emergency action plan? We were the only ones. So we have our emergency action plan done and completed. Stephanie Peck will be getting in touch with the town to get it official because we can't get any signatures. And I guess we're closing out this, this chapter. When you get the mitigation, the new mitigation hazard plan, I know that we had to pay for this outdated one, could we just, can I ask the council that we get a new one for free? Since we had to buy this one and it's totally outdated by 15 years, I'm wondering if we can get a new one when it's complete, if we can get the new copy so that we can submit it with our EAP? So we have it in our binder altogether? Because that hazard mitigation plan is very important if there was ever a problem at the dam, that that is current so that we can get FEMA money in case of a natural occurrence. So I don't know if you guys wanna, I had to pay like 50 bucks the last one, so I don't want to.
Have a copy, do you mean?
Did you get a copy? Yeah.
Well, I would think we probably, perhaps can provide a little update.
Stefan, do you want to speak to them? Gladly make sure that that expense comes directly from my account because of the fact that we've tried to keep up with the template changes. We can only go based on the legal document that currently exists. However, it's not a requirement for the EAPs to have hazard mitigation plan as part of their EAPs. This is something that they chose to do on their own, but.
We just got advice to have it in with our EAP.
Yeah.
I wouldn't know anything about the hazard mitigation plan if I didn't get an advice from somebody to make sure it was in our binder with everything else.
Well, you asked for the 50 bucks and I think Stefan, if I'm not mistaken, is saying he'll, he'll pay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right.
Once it comes around.
Excellent.
So you guys are all set now?
We're all set. We don't, we completed everything that we possibly could complete. Like I said, there are still some outstanding stuff that needs to be completed, but it's beyond our control. This has been going on for well over a year. We want to take it off our plate. We have more important things to do as a board over there than to do this. I do want to request that we have a tabletop discussion in February of, or January of 2020 so that we are compliant with our emergency action plan. So that tabletop discussion is gonna involve the EMA person?
Director.
Yes.
Director, DPW Director, and the fire, and everybody else that wants to come. But we're required to do one every couple of years. So we're gonna start with our tabletop one and then we're gonna, in two years, do the...
Hold on one.
Play fire and emergency personnel one.
So, so.
The acting out one. I don't know what you want to call it.
Functional, a functional exercise.
A functional exercise, as stated in section five of.
All right.
So is that something that we can get a date on, or?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, Mr. President, if they're all set, that we can move to remove this particular issue from the agenda. And then when you want to do that, Angela, if you want to shoot me an email in February, we can get it back on the agenda and set something up.
Yeah, actually, I would like to get it on the agenda before that. I'd like to have the meeting in February, January 2020, then we have the next one in 2022. And then we'll be due for our review.
And so what do you think needs to happen, that we put it down for December or January?
Let's put it down for December to get a date.
Sure.
Do I need to get it through you guys, or, I don't know how this works.
Why don't you send me an email and I'll make the inkling.
I don't know if I have to come here, do I, to say, wait two hours?
Not really.
Okay. I could just do an email?
I don't think so.
Can I speak to that, Counselor?
Absolutely.
Any plan that's written, if it's not tested, it's a theory. And these plans are legal binding contracts, so the minute that they're signed, now we have an obligation to make sure that we keep up our part of the effort.
Oh, we'll do it.
The planning, and I'm not doubting that, the planning districts that have been involved, so for instance, American Baptist Church, they chose to start, revise their plan, it's finished, it's already up for signing, it took two weeks to do. Everything is in place, they're ready to bring it before council, to have it be reviewed. Once it's reviewed, then we get all the principals together and we sit down, we have a tabletop exercise. Basically, the plan's in front of you. Everybody take their part of the plan, review it, and a scenario is built. And then we throw in trigger points. And then go around the table and how do people, according to the plan, react? This is the way that the plan is tested. And there's gonna be some hiccups and it's gonna need to be revised. And that's when all the principals sit down and revise. Basically, we review it. What went well, we did go well, how can we improve? And it builds up and it leads to an actual deployment of resources. Obviously, that gets into expenses and moving personnel and making commitments. To put a tabletop exercise together, you need at least two full months. January is not an unreasonable timeframe. If the plan, or, excuse me, if the tabletop is done within the first quarter, that'll meet so long as all the parties agree, we could sign off and say, yeah, in fact, the plan has been tested and we can move forward. But coming into the holidays and then whatever vacations for the first couple of weeks, I would suggest putting it off until February. But seeing as though, Councilman Andrews, like you ended up getting involved and I was pulled out of the equation because I'm following the chain of command, I went at my step and just started working with the district directly to formulate what they call a master exercise layout, a measles, in order to make this happen. Because in order to work with emergency services, it's the constables, it would be talking with the state police, and more importantly, working with Exeter Fire, Exeter Two Fire and DPW in order to coordinate that. So making sure those people, especially the volunteers, are available is gonna be, is gonna be paramount. And this is gonna be an all-day thing, it's only like a couple of hours. But just as Angela had may mention, it'll need that requirement to test that plan.
So do you need me to coordinate this? Doesn't sound like I need to coordinate it, though.
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's what I, because I don't understand. But don't you do this throughout the state, throughout, don't you do training?
I do this internationally. And what I do is, we have to reach out, this is a timeframe, you have to reach out, talk to the principals, extend a letter, an invitation, look at their scheduling, there's a lot to setting up the planning process. And this is where the miscommunication had occurred. And again, I'll use it for instance, American Baptist Church chose to take on the project themselves, which you're allowed to do. And they did it, they got everything done that they needed to do. I have to sit down and review it with them, that would come before you. Or York or Mill did, for instance, they have no clue how to get started, all the principals are together, we've already met, we put together a planning team, we set up a schedule of meetings, and we laid out exactly how things are going to move forward and who needs to be contacting who. It takes time, it's not just a question of calling somebody up on the phone and telling them you need to be there. It, you have to be as considerate as you can of people's schedules, and especially in this community, because again, a lot of people wear a lot of different hats.
And here, in this case, in Exeter, you'd be the one that would set the date and then try to pull the parties together, is that?
What I would do is I would sit down with the principal, in this case with the Association, and say, give me three dates, let's get these people together, let's find out the best ones to work with, and then move forward. And then I would reach out to those principals because I am listed in the plan as the action plan coordinator, and we would start coordinating based on what's written in their plan as it sits right now. Now keep in mind, they go through this, but it's not official until it's signed, and this is how this all started, so.
Who's gonna sign, who's the signing? Who does the signing?
Obviously, the Association. It's their plan, they're required to do this by law.
We signed our part.
But we need to sign it once we review and accept what they've written in there. And obviously, as a result of this plan, statewide, we're actually removing one of the edicts because it affected every single plan of the state. And that's the one that involved public works, so their role or responsibility in trying to mitigate, as was just identified, those properties that are private and some of the legal aspects of us committing resources of private property, that was crossing a legal trail that they don't even know how that annex got in there. I found out, it was written out of state and was copied into our template, which was fine for that jurisdiction, but not good for us. So we're gonna remove it, and we could do that. And DEM has said, they've already given us the official bless you of it. So I applaud their effort and wanting to move forward, and I want to put this to bed. And like I said, we've got four dams that are in the queue, three that we're assisting in cometry at this time as a result of our workshop. And, you know, it has been a long process, but we've learned a lot from it. And as a side note as well, I want to apologize to the Association and to the council for not being here at last month's meeting. I had an unexpected event popped up, so I couldn't be here. But then all of this would have been, hopefully, mitigated at that point, but regardless, we still would have needed to be this long.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because I want to go home. I have to put my kid to bed. So what I'm gonna take from this is that Mr. Kukalakis is going to get in touch with the Boon Lake Dam Association, Dam District, Management District, and set up, give us three dates, and then he's gonna be the point person to set everything up. So I don't really need to do anything, just wait for the email, right? Am I getting that right, just so I?
Well, first I gotta get a plan. I don't have a plan.
Stephanie Peck has the plan, I mean, um.
It's, it's not, it's not their job to give it to me.
It's, they, they have the plan.
Yeah, no, as soon as they review it.
I know, yeah.
And they put whatever information that's in there.
Right, they're gonna give it to you to sign.
And then I'll coordinate with you to find out what dates would be available for you.
Yeah.
So I start with you and then I find out how everybody else is available.
We can do that.
Yeah, we're all on board with that. We'd like to do it in January if we can. February, you're starting to get into the vacation, school vacation time, so that's kind of iffy. But if we could do it late January, that would be great. We're all for it. We'd like to do this.
I have no problem.
I'm sure Stefan will attempt to accommodate it.
Yeah.
As best he can. It's just indicated February is probably best.
Yeah.
I'm sure he can avoid school vacation.
Whatever you need to do.
I, I just, I just want, I just want to say that I know this has been difficult or painful. This follow-up to the last meeting came a message to us, it says the entire process has spun out of control. I think that, I don't, I don't think that's terribly inaccurate portrayal because I, like you, also followed up and found out that the office attempted to send the information out, but it wasn't apparently received. Is that, is that, do I understand that correctly?
That wasn't the information that Amy had called.
An email was sent to the wrong email address. It wasn't received by us. We didn't know what email was sent because we didn't receive it, so both parties were out cut out.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Were you expecting it? I mean, I've been in a situation where I've expected to hear from someone, and when I didn't, I've reached out and said, I do this all the time with Lynn and others. I thought we were supposed to get whatever it was. Did you ever say to the office?
If we were, we really, we really, yeah, that's a great point, but you have to understand that we're all like residents of the lake and we all have different jobs and we all are pretty busy.
Even so, the information in the email was not correct because we didn't have access to that database on our own as residents. You have to have a certain software system in order to access it.
You're talking about the RIGIS?
The RIGIS system is a.
He found it on his phone.
Yeah, the RIGIS system is an electric database, so we, I downloaded it and worked it.
Would you say that, please, because you see, this is the problem. You say you didn't have access.
We didn't have access.
He, he found it on his phone two days later.
You can find it, you can't download the information. I called and spoke to Christina at the Rhode Island State Mapping because I spent three hours trying to download the information so they didn't have to come back to Town Hall to look for it. And, and it's Christina, 222-6481, that's her phone number, I spoke to her.
Regardless, that situation has been resolved, so we'd like to move forward from here on out.
Well, I hope so.
Hopefully, work will step on and get a plan in place that we can test out.
Well, I hope so too.
Yeah, that's what we've been waiting for.
Well, exactly, and we all have.
Yeah.
And anyway, you're not the only ones that followed up. When you presented to us last month, obviously, I had questions and we discussed them, addressed them.
Yeah, no, it's been a long road. We learned a lot and we're ready to go now.
Good, good. Then wait, wait for Stefan. He can't act until he gets a report back from Spencer.
Spencer Peck.
I believe it's Spencer, according to what you sent.
She has everything.
You referred to Stephanie earlier.
I, I'm sorry.
I believe it's Spencer.
Sister combo.
I believe it's Spencer, which is a brother and sister combo. Anyway, we are trying to follow and trying to help, and I think that Stefan will take care of it. He's done this everywhere. He's done this everywhere. But he can't move until he gets Spencer Peck.
I will follow up with her at the end of the week to make sure she's following up with...
I think it's Spencer, I, I thought Spencer was...
Yeah, Spencer.
It is Spencer.
I said Stephanie very, very mistake.
Okay, it's okay, there's a lot of people who don't understand.
But I will follow up with her by Friday, to make sure she's following up with him. Just to make sure that things get signed.
Thank you. And we all make sure we have the right email.
And you can take it off the agenda.
Yes.
Got it?
Manny, thank you for your time, Manny, helping us with this resolve.
Thank you guys for coming up, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you guys next time.
I think, well, uh, we move, uh, you know, you suggested we remove it, Manny, I think.
I think, I think that would be appropriate.
Any objections to removing?
Oh, remove it.
And hearing that, we'll remove that from the agenda.
But note, it's gladly removed.
And thank you, Stefan, for your clarification.
Actually, you know what I wanna do? I wanna apologize to all of the other town employees that clear the council, they got involved. Uh, it never should've escalated to this point, but Danny can speak to that later as to how we got to this point. But regardless, I just wanna put it to bed, and, uh, to the next...
Yeah, we're on the road to redemption.
And I hope that you'll get the tools you need to do that, from Spencer, whoever this Spencer person is.
Oh, this is far from over.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to Kay. Uh, Stevens, come out to take a seat. Steve Manchek, DPW Director, goes to come up with a discussion of ordinance changes. You, you have these given to you last week, I believe. Steve, you have them in front of you.
Yes, so we, uh, as a collaborative effort, the clerk, deputy clerk, myself, sat down to review the ordinance. Uh, it's brought with some changes that'll make it a little more efficient. And based on, uh, the charter, what they're wording in the same ordinance. And this is obviously just recommendations, some of it is obviously all for discussion. So you see the highlights of the things we changed. And the reason the first one's changed, basically, is so that we can solve a problem right away. Instead of have to wait for a council meeting to, and get on an agenda, which could take a month. So that, but it's still, in the end, if there's, if there's any problem, it still comes back to the council regardless. Uh, that which would be in the thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five D, uh, B. All, all appeals, A and B for the... So, so that's just basically so that we can, instead of the word revoke, we switch it to suspend. Because only the council can revoke, and, and that's be my opinion, and I believe that's accurate. And, but, as the director of the facility, I should be able to suspend temporarily till we solve the problem.
And Steve, let me just comment to everyone that's sitting here. And Dan knows this is a drunk business, also been sitting a while. But all this language dates back to years ago, when the DPW Director was not in charge of the transfer station. That's been something that's done fairly recently.
That was when the charter, when they approved the charter.
A few years ago, or, so, okay. But the, not the original charter, huh? You've always been in charge, the DPW Director?
No, certain council liaisons overs...
Well, I, I remember that.
But that's been correct.
In any case, to me, this makes it much quicker, much more sustainable.
Right, it just follows up the town, other documents, like again, like the charter, under thirty-four, fifty-six, intelligent management operation. Uh, so that's what that language is. I'm not sure how, you just wanna go right through the highlighted ones? Or if you have any questions, make it more efficient?
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay, page two?
Well, yeah, page two, let's see. Lynn actually made this recommended change because of, uh, the way she read it and understood it. It basically discusses residents, only the resident, even if they're a renter, can have a sticker for the facility. You can't have the owner and a renter. So if the owner lives out of state, or even lives in town, in different residents, then they can get a sticker for that residence, but not for the one that they're renting out. That's basically what that first one is.
Just a grammatical issue, uh, uh, just quickly. Where it says, uh, do not reside at those residences, would not be entitled. I would, I would really like to see a change to will, to make it, they won't, they will not, as opposed to would. And, and further, I mean, it's a small point, but as I read it, I thought it looked, looked a little cleaner. And, and the same thing with E, uh, any resident who otherwise will not utilize, as opposed to would. That's just my suggestion to my report.
Then the next, um, thirty-four seventy-eight, with switching the date from August to September to August.
Remember, we talked about this council? Seems like a smart move.
It eliminates the holiday issue, selling stickers on Labor Day weekend. Difficult to get people to work, such things. Makes it a little more, uh, easier for the operation. I think that date needs to be changed, Lynn, you could have September thirty before.
Well, it was August thirty-one and August thirty-one, so I left it to September thirty and September thirty. What do you wanna do?
I think it's supposed to be September first.
You want September first?
No.
You want September first and September first, not...
We want, we want October.
We want October first.
Oh.
We can leave it to September, it's only a day. Look, but...
Well, no, make it honorabe for October first.
Right, and it will...
Second one can be thirty, September thirty.
It has to be September thirty, right.
But then, so the first date is October first.
However, the stickers are printed properly, the sign gets made properly.
So it's honorabe for October first, following September thirty?
Yeah, that, that date's good. The first date's gonna be October first.
October first and September thirty.
All right.
Nothing on the following page, bottom, it's under thirty-four, one-thirty, miscellaneous provisions. So it just basically returned back to the first, where it talks about, uh, language and behavior. The transfer station will not be tolerated, abusive language. And it just goes back to speak to, it says re...
They have revocation.
Had that in there, so we just wanted to switch it to suspension. And then obviously, the town ordinance in state law, which reverses basically back to thirty-four, thirty-four. And then it's, uh, imposition, so it's disposition, under thirty-four, one-fifty-one. Just change that word, and then remove the B section.
I, I know, just, just the logistics of that.
The reason B is removed is because it's no longer a fund balance by charter change.
Right, I get that, but...
So it doesn't, that's little, it, it's deceiving. That you're saying that the funds that we collect are going to operate the facility. They are and they, they aren't at the same time. They obviously go in the general fund, because the money is appropriated at the financial town meeting. So it's no longer a fund balance where we can build a balance and carry those funds. Now it's an appropriation account.
I, I, I get that, but...
So that's why that one is struck out.
We just can't leave it, well, I mean, what does the treasurer say? Did you ask her? I know what you're saying, 'cause we don't have a fund, designated fund anymore.
It is not specifically used to operate the transfer station. In theory, obviously, it is, but it still goes through the general fund.
No need to state this.
I just think it's, it's deceiving. That you're saying that you, the monies are being used to operate the facility, and they're already pre-approved. I mean, you can overrule that.
Thank you for a second. Section five fourteen of the charter, transfer station, facility fund. There shall be a, uh, fund established by the treasurer, uh, into which all appropriations, revenue, receipts, fees, donations, gifts, or any other funds received.
Did that not get revised? That was the chart, that's okay.
That's the old one, I think.
There, there, there's a revision that, um, somewhere.
Yeah, and was that, what, four years, five years ago, six years ago?
Who did Jim introduce?
Well, what you do is what I do when you bring your code of ordinances.
I, I think it was something like that.
No, it's all right, we'll, no, it's okay.
Remember the old laugh, like, never mind.
That's all right, we'll, we'll get it fixed.
We'll look and stay in that case, that would only be...
We'll get it fixed.
I know, that's not a good...
I mean, it is fixed.
Apologies.
It's okay. We'll, we'll, we'll get to that.
What was in the document, I don't know, June sixteen?
Okay, about the next section?
Under payment, they just struck out, struck the words with the exception of tipping fees. So that refers to rubbish, the old language of rubbish haulers, who used to be allowed to tip. So that doesn't have to be there. The next one down is the word residences, it's changed to residents, under thirty-four, one-fifty-three.
No, well, you didn't do anything with fees, and I'm not saying we should, but you know...
We haven't got that file yet.
Well, it says it will...
That's the, that's the annual sticker.
Is there another, is there another place where it says that it can be...
This is, you're right, this, the sticker fee is not changing.
But we can't put language in case at some point that needs, that could be adjusted.
The sticker fee you guys set annually.
I know, but if it's in an ordinance, then the ordinance has to be, you can't do it as set by the council.
You can, I believe Jim said we can actually, we can do that. We actually have some language coming up that's gonna speak to that.
Okay, let's move on.
So we go on, if you go on to thirty-four, one-fifty-four, it's the fees for bulky waste restricted items and hard disposed of, items shall be as follows. Then we added the, the line, the town reserves the right to change the fees without amending this section when the state changes its fees. Which this speaks directly to the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation changing their fees every other year. And they don't, and it doesn't coincide with anything for us. We just have to accept it, and... So we eliminated the fees for three items, which is E-waste, that's currently a state-funded operation.
Can I, can I just say something? Why then, Steve, don't we just say per state law when you put the fee?
I don't know if it's law, it's regulation.
Why would you set a fee and then say, well, we'll change it if the state changes it?
We have, I, it could, it takes us three, four months to get an ordinance change.
Exactly, what I'm saying is, instead of listing a fee, and then just saying...
We have to, all right, we have to list the fee for Rhode Island Resource Recovery, so they have it on their A to Z for the public to see. They have a list, and we have to put a price on it if we have a fee. That's requested by the state.
I'd like to look at the language, I mean, that's got me a little paranoid.
Yeah, these fees have been established for a very long time, and we barely adjust them, most of them. But since televisions are now free, under the E-waste program, as well as computers and microwaves, um, the, we don't have to have a ten-dollar fee there, we can have zero.
Understood.
'Cause if I leave the ten-dollar fee, and then they don't charge it, then somebody thinks they're getting away with something.
I see where you are coming from.
Right. But when the state changes the fee on a mattress, it's unrecoverable from zero to fifty dollars. That's what they did. They had no fee, then they had a fifty-dollar fee, then they had a zero fee, again, now they're back at fifty dollars again. And they did that in the course of two years. So that's why, um...
Yeah, the, my old thing comes that the town deserves the right to change the fee. I mean, changing the fee would seem to imply changing the ordinance, so I think, you know, I mean, the language...
I agree, that's why I asked if it was doable.
If I could just take a look at the language and try to figure out, this came to me Friday night.
Yeah, I know, I know. And then, uh...
Just one more question, Steve?
Sure?
Tell me what the mattress, recoverable, non-recoverable, and box spring...
What, what is it, zero, right now, you said it's been back, or back and forth?
Right, and a recoverable mattress is, with the program right now, the state runs. All right, and if you bring in a mattress, it's what they call recoverable, which means they can recycle it. That mattress you can drop for free. If it's deemed unrecoverable, which means it cannot be recycled. If the box springs broke, the mattress is ripped, or torn, stained, oily, you know...
Bedbugs?
No, no, that's not, not a problem. Not lying. They accept those as recoverable. So, well, they bake them, so... But no, it's, they change their fees because the program... So, what's that page, you can put in my... There, we...
Should be number thirteen.
Propane?
Should be number thirteen.
Yes, oh, yes, that is incorrect, isn't it? And then I don't even have the mattress one in here.
We have that, the next page.
Why not?
Goes right to article three. Well, I noticed that, it just switches it, the unrecoverables to the fifty-dollar piece, to the mattress.
And they're on the next page, they're sixteen, seventeen, you don't have that page.
Oh, I have that.
Bring it here, it goes like this.
This one.
See, it's in the wrong order, I didn't stay aware. All right, so yeah, I have it, just in the wrong page or... So, yeah, so the mattress is not recoverable, went to fifty, from zero.
No, you, of course you would, you have to double pages.
So now, after that, if we could go down to additional tipping fees under thirty-four, one-fifty-six. We've had a loophole for quite a while, and certain people, and different, quite a few people have actually taken advantage of it. Uh, if you come in with a vehicle, we've had vehicles in there for years, just pickup trucks, rated from half-ton to one-ton, and greater. And there's been fees for that. But if they have a trailer attached with it, there's not a fee for the trailer. So you get someone that comes in with a landscape trailer and their truck, and they're both full, they get the trailer for free. 'Cause there's no fee scale to apply. So if you came in, and then sometime, if you come in with just a trailer, they would charge you the truck rate. So realistically, there's a gray area, we wanna correct the problem. So obviously, it, it just fixes a problem where the other taxpayers don't have to pay for a trailer load of debris. You know, this normally only falls under bulky hard disposed of items, well, construction debris, such, such things as that. Has nothing to do with household trash. So if you bring your trash in, once a month, and it's back in your truck, it's all bagged trash, that goes right into the tackle under your one-fifty, sticker fee, there's no additional fee. But when you bring in a truckload of demo, and a trailer load full, they've only charged, get in charge for one of them. So if we put this, uh, based on truck size bed, eight foot long, and it just goes up the same rate that it does for the trucks do, based on weight, and then we have a schedule now for trails. Based exactly on the size of a pickup bed, so it's fair, as fair as we can be.
Are you adding a security component to the...
Just a tape measure.
To the, to the, to the transfer station? Did you show this to the gentlemen that are monitoring this?
No, they'll just, they'll be shown how to measure the trailers.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
I'm not trying to complicate it.
No, I understand, it's the easiest solution I could come up with.
I, I understand.
For the problem we have.
I get it.
So that's, that's the end of that one. Uh, this is, so we added a section. Actually, one more thing I'd like to discuss, I did not highlight, but I did think about it. Under enforcement, it says enforce under section thirty-four, one-ninety-one. It has enforcing officer, and it has a town sergeant handing out warnings. I believe we should change the handing out of warnings to Director Public Works. And then leave the fining, or the, the second offense, which is the fine with money, and the sub, uh, the second offense, the town sergeant handle that, because it has money attached with it. But I don't see where the, the town sergeant should have to hand out a warning.
Well, like, the first offense, you say...
The first offense is a warning, a written warning. Right, so that, that should fall under the management, and then a fine should fall under the...
If it didn't work, and it was...
I'd like to change that first offense, written warning, and just put it to Director Public Works. Or, because it just seems, doesn't seem that efficient.
Agreed.
Transfer it to town sergeant.
What about enforcing officer, do you wanna change that language at all?
We have to change it, um, and put both.
Yeah.
First offense, Director Public Works, second and third offense, plus, you know, we would be the town sergeant. So that top line would get changed.
To reword, yeah.
To reword, just to add in, uh, forbidden warnings would be the public works. And second and further would be town sergeant, because it has the money and a fine attached to, not just a written one.
D C should be, uh, not loss of license. You can't move your license. B two C, it says subsequent offense, loss of license.
That should, that would say boss of, that should say boss of...
Transfer station.
Transfer station privileges.
Per man.
Per man.
Per man. Like, just like I said, that language has been in there for twenty years. I believe some of that, well, see, that's a hauler one. Okay, that's for haulers, that's not, that's our hauler. That's, that doesn't, that's not for residents. First one's for residents, users of the facility, under one. Two is hauler violation, so that means if our hauler was violating on our ordinance, we can warn them and fine them.
And where do you... And where do we change the license?
And that is a license that you would pulling, if he goes hauling license.
Well, contract.
You wouldn't want to change license to permit.
Well, he doesn't have to permit.
To do the same thing.
It's a license that he has with the town.
So how about we add the word hauling license, so it makes it just perfectly clear.
They can't even dump it there.
No, it's not, it's not to do with dumping, it's to do with hauling. It's, it's on contract.
You have to have the contract.
On contract, right. If they're violating, baiting, violating our ordinance, our contractor, say our contractor violates, that's why it's.
It's only for our contractor.
It only speaks directly to our hauler.
Your, okay.
Correct. The loss of license, or you can't say loss of contract, you can say loss of license, he has a license with the town. Unless there's some other language you'd like to have there.
It should be in the contract.
There is language in the contract that speaks to not violating the town ordinance. But isn't, it is in his contract as well. But this wording probably is not exact. It just says they're not going to violate town ordinance. And the contract we have will hold. But that's something, again, it's just old and it should be updated to whatever feels is proper.
Does that specify our hauler or does it say?
It says hauler, period. Not, not.
Well, it's hauler with an S.
Not, not talking about companies coming in and dumping. It's not talking about tipping.
Well, it's just hauler is violating the section.
Yeah, hauler is.
With an S. But you don't want it to have.
You could take the S off, or you can put vendor, you can put a lot of different, you put vendor.
Just, just to make it clear to anybody that might be affected.
The town's vendor.
You could put vendor, town's vendor, just to speak specifically in cases of issue. And that issue would be that if they brought trash in instead of taking trash out, that would be a violation, for instance.
Ken, you had made it one of the speaker a while ago, do you remember what it was you were just saying?
Oh, any time that, I think there was money involved in a fee schedule, we have to have a public hearing.
We have to change the, the, the sticker price.
Right, we have to have a public hearing.
That's fine.
So this has to be.
Well, no, this would.
This is going to public hearing, I think.
So the, this is gonna be an ordinance, public hearing. That's fine.
Just trying to hammer out a little bit of the language.
I think Ken was speaking in my thought about just don't, you know, where's, but the council change a, a fee, that's alright. Sounds good. Thank you for doing this work.
Right, and then the next item after the hauler, we go to, we added a section on thirty-four one ninety-two, it's business vehicles. There's been some problems with business vehicles. Business vehicles will be allowed to dispose of waste, no.
Yeah, to dispose.
No business vehicles will be allowed to dispose of waste other than bagged household waste. So if you come in with your work truck and you install carpets for a living, you can come in, you can take your, your household trash, you can throw it away under your sticker fee, but you can't come in with a van full of carpet and throw it away. Because that's not what your sticker covers, that's a bulky waste. And that's be considered a commercial hauler. Or, you know, so with that's, that's not, that does not belong in our facility, this is for residents. And if you tear down your bathroom and you can bring that up, that's not a problem. And you pay whatever little fee has to go with it. But if you have a business, like say, just our used carpet installers, it's easy. Um, they come in, they dump a whole van full for nothing. So it's not fair to the taxpayers, it's handed all this stuff to John. So that's why that was added. Now we can modify it, adjust it, business issue.
Should read business vehicles will not be allowed.
Well, it says no business vehicles. That'd be better. Change it to town, town vendor. Yeah, that's how we used to spell it.
No, this is gonna work with the public.
I think this will resolve a lot of those issues with that.
Many issues should be resolved, that's the last one.
Yeah.
That I have. I think it, it's a few little tweaks, I think, when we finish this up and then it can. Don't put it down in here, ready for next one. Okay. Unless there's any other comments. Jim, Jim's gonna finish, it'll still be something come down from Jim, we'll make some more changes.
Okay, we're, we're having a sidebar.
I know, I know exactly what you're saying, don't worry.
Yes, so, well, I was gonna say, let's, let's move this to a public hearing. It's suggested and recommended that this go back to, to review, be prepared.
Yeah, Jim, I'll be waiting on Jim's info.
An ordinance for that.
The future, um, just to like recalibrate the way we usually do ordinances, if somebody's ready to present something to a council person who might want to adopt and then put it in for introduction, that's usually what's done, but until, until something is on form where you feel it's ready to go, it should be hashed out in advance and I'm, I'm always available to help with that. Um, I, I really don't think that we should bother the council in doing the minutia of it before it's even in a form that, you know, it's ready to go. I mean, and I'm not, really I'm not criticizing, but I'm just saying, rather than taking an hour at a town council meeting where everybody sits down and says this should be an S, that should be a section touch. It really, that stuff should be hashed out before it's even presented for an introduction. Then, then it gets introduced, you know what I mean? Or you could go to a, a work session.
Well, this was requested last month.
Okay, yeah, but regular town council meeting usually isn't a work session. For that kind of free range of things. I mean, I, I'm not criticizing, believe me, because I know I'm with the work you do. And it missed a lot too. But I'm just saying, that's probably the best, the best method.
Well, we'll move it forward then for discussion. We should keep it on the December and January, see if it's ready, if it's not ready. I mean, to, to move out for a public hearing, might be anybody.
Somebody has to introduce it, right, in a form that someone is happy with.
Who's gonna, who's gonna need Jim in that one for introduction?
No, not necessarily.
Somebody's gonna have to do that, right? It could, you could say that, you could have, then, then it just means that you have to have it in an introduc- introducible form at that point. So, there's work that has to be done.
What, what's worked best in the past, if, if I have to draft and people send me their comments, I summarize the comments, identify who said the comments, and then we discuss the comments. Or instantly draft one.
Routine, right. Well, Steve, we, we know that this became an issue of, of corrections that need to be made with what was being distributed at the desk and what was written in the ordinance. And we found that out when the, in the last couple of months, because there was an issue. So I think Steve was trying to correct the language so that it was consistent. But we'll move it forward, we need to keep it on the agenda and see where, where it is finished under unfinished business.
Yeah.
Isn't it unfinished? Yeah, it's unfinished right now. Any other questions of the council? Uh, would you, and, uh, Ken, will you look at this, work through it, talk with Steve, somehow?
Yeah, if both people have comments, I think we need time to review it and then. It's something to me, you know, summarizing, you already do it.
Yeah, I, and again, I looked at it as Steve knew there were issues currently that needed to be corrected. So that's what I thought we were gonna try to, which we kind of are, but let's move on.
Yeah, put along this copy, this version. This version right here.
Well, whatever, whatever.
You know what corrections we talked about tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
They're writing them, believe me.
Alright, ready to move. Thank you, Steve. Uh, the next item. It's been addressed prior. Manny, I know you, you wanted to bring this to us and thank you for doing that. Do you want to speak to us, please?
Yes, um, so at prior council meetings, we discussed the tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and volunteer rescue personnel, increasing the cap from the present fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars based upon certain criteria. Um, with the help of Jim, of course, the solicitor, he provided us, um, the ordinance. What I didn't know, chief, uh, was that I, at least I was putting a copy for the house because I thought we had to pass the ordinance first and then go to the state to get the resolution. The solicitors advised me that, uh, it's backwards, it's the other way. So we've got to get the resolution passed, um, sent it up to the state, the state passes their enabling legislation, then the council has to take up the issue of the, of the exemption. So what I'd like to do is keep this on the agenda and put it on the December meeting for approval of the resolution to submit the enabling legislation to the state, once the Assembly and Senate take, uh, take up the two thousand and twenty session. Did I get that right, Jim?
Exactly, yeah, and the resolution is there in the package.
Yes.
So, and, and the proposed legislation is there for the state legislative delegation to, to act on. So that's the first part, and then, once that's passed, then, then we have the ordinance ready to go and to be considered by the council.
Alright, so, so we've got all the pieces in place, so what I ask you, like I said, is to keep this on the December, um, agenda uh, for approval of the resolution for the enabling legislation, assuming we do that, I'm, I'm hoping we do next month. I'll get in touch with our state rep and state senate and make sure that gets done as quickly as possible once the senate and house take, uh, take up the two thousand and twenty session.
No, and that's good. And Manny, now that we're going that route, then, uh, I, I believe we should put it on the new business as a resolution.
Yes.
We're going with your.
Yes.
So here it is, we have it in place, and we'll put that on the new business. And the resolution, as you said, Jim, we're prepared, so thank you for that. Any other discussion on that item? Here we go. Uh, moving to item, uh, M, and that was the DEM notice to the department, uh, D P W. Uh, Steve, I know you were pursuing that, I believe you in that, and I think Manny, did you not meet as well?
Yeah.
So Steve, would you want to speak first?
Yeah, Manny, myself and I had a meeting, um, the DEM. They were still looking up some permitting from the eighties that they were, they still haven't, we still haven't received that. They said they had to get it off microfiche or something such as that, and it would take a while. And they were gonna put it over to permitting for review and then they were gonna get back to us, so we're waiting on DEM now. In that meeting, well, I think a week after the last month's council meeting, so we've been waiting three weeks, and I'm sure we'll wait another month. So that's where we are, we're waiting for them to review.
Manny, you, you went with Steve, as I understand, is that correct?
Yes. We met for a couple of hours and it was very interesting to hear the stuff and, at least in my opinion, DEM was not aware of some things, uh, that they now are made aware by the D P W director, and that's why they're looking into this stuff.
Uh, there might have been something left behind here from public comment earlier this evening, I know you weren't here. I think, was it left behind, man, correct, in public comment? So you might, you might wish to review that. We, I know you walked in and public comment was over. Yes, we, we'll keep this on the agenda as unfinished business, please. And I believe that will be the case for N, um, with the issue of ethics and training. Ken, did you have something?
Yeah, let's save the day, it will be sent out this, I mean, go that week. Monday, the twenty-fifth.
Monday, the twenty-fifth.
November.
November.
Seven P M.
Seven P M here, it'll be a work, a work, no, we decided to, well. Work session involving any of the woods that are rolling in. Please, and it's, and it is. But it's December, and I'm sorry, November twenty-fifth. And finally, O, we, we, uh, we have a communication from plan. Uh, let me read this, I, I know there's been some interest here, particularly on your part, and I know for Mike's, but here, here is for the record memorandum that came today, uh, from our planner. Planning Board and Economic Development Task Force have discussed applying for the Site Readiness Program administered by Rhode Island Commerce. There is a general agreement between the memberships to apply for municipal assistance to investigate the development potential of the area around the U S section of Route one oh two, three, and ninety-five. No specific boundaries have been identified, but the prior inmandator has been contacted and is in support of our efforts and will sign a letter stating such to include with our application. The Economic Development Task Force and the Planning Board will also sign letters of support. We are asking that the town council provide permission to the council president to sign a similar letter of support to submit with our application, applications that due November fifteenth. Having said that, Mike, did you want to elaborate in any way? I know you've been a participant.
So everybody, everybody, the planning board, the economic development task force have all been working together with Ashley to try to pull this together in enough, in a quick enough timeframe to meet this deadline. Um, so the Economic Development Task Force has a work session Thursday, Thursday, to deal with it. And it's a joint session next Tuesday? Next Tuesday at twelve.
I think.
Between planning and the task force, that'll be the, basically the meeting right before this has to be sent in. So, I mean, everybody's.
I had a talk to Ashley briefly about this too, and she mentioned that if you work together, that it was, uh, highly unlikely that they would have a complete application, but she was then in contact with the, with the state and the, they advised them that even though it's incomplete, they should get whatever they could get in because they feel this is a good fit for what they're trying to do.
Good.
So, it appears they'd probably be somewhat flexible over it.
And that letter of support for, for the project coming from the council is something that certainly Ashley would draft.
And it's an aspect of the readiness application, they just kind of wanted that everybody from the town was kind of on board.
Right, and they want to know we've been contact, that the council's been contacted, that we encourage, um, the use of property, you know, for something that could possibly hopefully expand a dance business. Alright, Mike?
Actually, the state wants to see that all bodies, every mile, feel it's a viable project.
Sure. So I would hope that the council would feel it's worth, it's an application, it doesn't come into anything more than looking at, uh, looking at the site to see what needs to be done, uh, to make the right rent and drive the stand cover, and that's the process.
Yeah.
So, all we have to do is ask if it's something that the state will approve. Is there a motion on the?
Will I make a motion? Have to send a letter in support of the site readiness application, just to be included.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, the letter be prepared and included with the application. It speaks on behalf of the council that we support the application and the, uh, the, the potential for, for readiness for that site. Discussion, questions, Dan, anything?
No, I'm pretty calm.
Good. Uh, I mean, I just thought maybe, because, I mean, anybody else? Hearing none. Was there a motion? Yes. And was there a second?
Yes.
Motion is made and seconded. Those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, so voted. Uh, thank you, Mike, thank you, Frank, for working, and thank you, Bill. And, um, and I think there's another, there's a member of the task force at that, thank you. So go to these meetings and keep it rolling, thank you. Regarding reports, Ken, anything else that you need to tell us?
Couple of quick things as far as our meetings, but I just thought I'd clarify, I think that Monday, the November twenty-fifth, training is at six thirty, the ethics train is not seven, it's at six thirty.
Six thirty meeting on, on Monday, November twenty-third. Here in this room.
Yep. And so I was tasked with a few things after work session. Uh, the one that I found interesting was, I was talking about parking and give Manny ten pages of our parking ordinance, not traffic ordinance, that we didn't discuss when we were trying to talk about having, we need to work with the town sergeant to come up with a better planning kind of notice, but.
You know, that's for, yeah.
We have substantial ordinance on traffic parking that should be able to handle it. Steve probably knows all about it.
On the traffic control.
You have traffic control. You have traffic control officer?
Yes. I'll, I'll take a look at that, uh, and see, yeah, maybe touch base with Steve, we need to tweak that a bit.
And look, 'cause Lynn was gonna come up with some sort of form, correct? If somebody walks in and says, well, what do I need to do, then you hand them the form, and maybe the form will reference some of the regs we already have in place.
We have quite a few regs.
Okay.
So that's what Manny has that information.
Good.
And then also, we talked about filming on the town property within town. And I went on the Rowan film TV office website, they have an application there that states that anybody that films within Rowan for commercial use or, um, they have to file a permit application at that.
With the state?
Whether or not.
State?
With the state film commission, because they don't file it, they may stop production on it. Um, and then I looked at the, um, other municipalities, and New Shore has a film protocol form that includes fees. They must get a lot of filming up there, more than we do. But it was interesting that, um, the Rowan, I sent an email to Carol Conley, who's on the film commission. Um, she's wanting to see what's the applications and, um, setting them back, and I just asked the local municipality. But the show that was filmed up here is noted on the film website, so they must have put an application in.
Okay, so...
They said they did.
So the, the email I know that came first to Lynn or you or someone about the film? Oh, oh, which one, the, the previous one up on Old Town? No, on Town, uh...
N O S four eight two?
Yeah.
Oh. The, the one that was up on Town Hall Roads?
Oh, was it?
Yeah. That was Town Hall Road.
So, the one that's...
The library was a parking lot, the field, that's all that was.
So the one that contacted us recently and is filming at the library and wants to film here Wednesday night?
Well, we received an email from...
That's the one I'm talking about.
Mac and I received an email from Amy today that they, um, it didn't go as well as she thought it was going to go.
Proof for the, what, Smithsonian?
Yes.
Smithsonian, yes. Um, they were more demanding, and they didn't want us to limit, they're filming on type of program loan into the library area. And, um, I'll follow the email to all of us if you want.
I think if you sort of got one, I mean...
Oh, a real one, she didn't give any email.
No, but...
But she wasn't happy with the outcome.
Just getting more of the state level doesn't clear them from us, because even if you, if you bother to watch a movie, they'll thank a state, but then they'll thank whatever towns or cities.
Oh, unless you're New Shore.
Unless you're New Shore. Then they say, thanks, luck on that.
Right, so I have a, I have a film, um, permit in the state right here, that's what they created. And then the Shores looks similar, um, but they call it protocol, and then they even have a fee scheduled that can be waived on the back, but, um, but they'll charge for a video shoot, a crew of twenty-one or more will be a thousand or twenty-five dollars.
Will you feel that one?
I don't, I couldn't find it, but I'll wait for the film commission to respond back to me.
Yeah, 'cause seriously, didn't you want film, don't they want filming after hours here in the vault or something?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night?
Quarter to five, they wanna come in and, like, a five-minute clip of Tim just going through an old book. But they sent me a three-page contract that they want me to sign, like everything's our something.
Talk about Mercy Brown.
Yeah, Mercy Brown.
They wanted to the cemetery too.
Yeah, they want to film at the cemetery.
A three-page contract, and what's that gonna require? That you copy both sides of a page?
So, anyway, they're supposed to be here on Wednesday night.
Yeah, we won't have any complaints by then, but you can just say no, they don't wanna do it.
No, I don't mind doing it, I just, it's okay with the council, can we do it?
We've got half of it anyway, right? They've already got the first half, so...
Well, as long as they're gonna be supervised and they're not gonna take it, of course you'll be here, so, of course, we don't mind if you stay late to accommodate the film production. But if you don't want to, then we'll say, we'll say no, don't stay.
They're supposed to be done by, um, it's only supposed to take up an hour, because I told them we have inspectors.
People are gonna be here.
Well, according to Amy, it was from Monday, a day off, and it went on quite a bit further than they thought it would.
I was gonna say a five-minute clip, how much footage do they shoot for that?
Yeah, probably.
For three minutes, it takes three hours.
Sure, that's...
So, and then, this is the, this is the form the state uses, the phone on state property, and that goes to state properties.
Okay.
So, people have it covered, I'll continue to find the best option for us, and... But we don't even know if this company now has the proper liability that we're asking for, no one responded back to us.
Well, yeah, I mean, you speak about the Smithsonian, as it sounds like, it's a pretty legitimate approach, but I don't, I don't think it's, we're not talking Smithsonian Institute in Washington, D.C., by the way. Please?
I'm spoken. Well, I think we're up in that.
Manny, did you talk to, did you watch, did you look at this three-page contract? Would you like us to tell you not to?
I'm just not gonna, because I'm gonna sign this.
Well, she wasn't gonna sign that, was she?
I'm not signing for the cemetery.
A location agreement is what they're calling it.
Yeah, like they have a four-fork wheel?
You give it to me.
Well, that's good, but if you go on their website, you can sign up to be an actual employee, or something, and just put your own name. There you go, you could have gone under, John.
Well, do you want some help from us, with, with your direction? Or you just, well, just ask Pat, she said she's not going yet, so, I mean, for the cemetery, so... Okay, well, I don't, anything else for that? Anything, Ken, any other issues?
Filming on home property, I think no one's here, um, everything we talked about.
I've got a tongue for Mike, flapping my gun, guns too much earlier. Uh, just, and, and just say that, uh, everybody knows the litigation's been kinda busy this month. If anybody has any questions about any of the cases, feel free to give me a call and I can answer your question.
I, I have a question, only in that, given the potential for an executive session, are you thinking we don't, we need to call it in your case?
There's, there's nothing that's so important that I need to discuss with the entire town council in particular. And that being said, I'm always open to anybody calling me and asking me about any piece of litigation we have.
But nothing we need to attend to.
Nothing that I need to talk to all of them.
Um, reports removed. Yes, Frank? Frank's gonna talk about the report he removed.
Yeah, the East Coast report on what happened at the, I think it was kind of a building committee during the last meeting. After the meeting with the council, it became clear to them that ninety-five million dollar body issue could be a problem for both towns. And at the last meeting, they went back and were taking a look at it. What they're trying to do is cut that number down to under seventy million, hopefully as low as fifty million dollars, which they think might be palatable to, to each town. Uh, and to develop, uh, an estimate, I suggest that they develop an estimate based on the three major, uh, areas that they're, they're trying to address. One is they, they call it data report, the other one's regulatory issues, and the third is they're trying to upgrade to the, uh, twenty-first century learning, uh, concepts. Uh, and that, uh, when they develop their estimates, that they should include those under three basic headings where they're concerned, at least where the general areas were at twenty years ago. So that's, they're meeting on the sixth of this week to see what they've come, we'll see what they've come up with.
Okay, Manny, thank you for continuing to go over there.
Donna Tyree is also on that.
Uh, then moving on, are there any, are there any, are there any administrative issues? Members of the council who wanted to bring to our attention, any issue that needs to be addressed? Lynn, nothing you can know of. Then we'll move to communications. Frank, I think you...
I think mine was addressed.
Two, three, five?
Ten, oh, yeah, ten, ten I have removed, that was the letter of application and interest from Jeanette Morrison.
Number fifteen's been addressed.
I'm sorry?
That's been addressed.
That's been addressed.
Number fifteen?
Well, number fifteen was an interesting, um, email that came to me, and I call it interesting because, um, it, it, I, you, I hope you'll take a minute to look at it. My first thought was to ask Pat if she could, to, well, investigate, well, investigating, uh, this issue. And it comes from a, a service, um, it says, "I'm writing this proposal to provide quality and affordable services to the town of Exeter. Over the years, Exeter has not had a police service other than relying on state police for emergencies, response time, response times, calls for service, et cetera. In addition, it's created a very extensive and expensive tab." Uh, not so, but, um, who knows? So starting a police department is extremely expensive, et cetera. So this community patrol officer program, and it speaks to all the issue, all, all the services they provide, and I just wasn't so sure about it, but Pat said she looked at a website and it seems like it's legit. And the only thing I, if you, I wanted you to look at it, I was just gonna suggest that we just forward it to, um, uh...
Town Sergeant?
No. Bill Donovan, uh, Town Sergeant, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I'm trying to come up with Town Sergeant, just so he sees it. I'm not suggesting we do anything about it, I just thought you should see it. My only thought was to share it with Lynn, so that if someone came in with these issues that we've addressed or to come up with a form for, like parking and crowd control, she might say, "Well, here's some in communication we got if you need to hire officers." I'm just saying, you know, you know what I mean, it's some kind of service, but I don't know enough about it, so I'm not endorsing it. I just wanted to know if you looked at it, I mean, it's, you, you must have, did you see it? It's like...
I, I did take a look at it, it took me about ten minutes to stop laughing.
Okay, well, I don't...
I'll be honest with you, as a former police officer, law enforcement officer...
I thought so.
We'd be crazy to do something like this and create so much more liability for the town.
Yeah, I didn't mean for the town, I wasn't suggesting that we, something the town would do.
No.
I just want, because it said, "To the Exeter Town Council."
Yes.
I got it personally, but I decided to share it with you because it said, "To the Town Council," but I'm not endorsing it.
I will be happy to speak to, uh, Town Sergeant Donovan as a former police officer. I'm pretty sure he and I are gonna be at the same point on time.
I bet you are, I just wanted him to know, I, I just wanted him to know that we see that.
If he's gonna entertain that, or you'll have to put it... I did that for crowd control at town meetings.
Please?
You might use it for crowd control at town meetings.
Well, I, yeah, probably. Uh, that nineteen is named...
My water has changed names.
I have no other medication, whether it's... I don't think so. That being said, is there any issue under executive session listed that you felt we needed to address?
No.
Any?
Still the same, still the range.
Any words? Then, then hearing none, I'd like to bring it over to you. So, the motion is seconded to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Don't go away, come on.
You remember the other thing?
I figured it was a vaccine.
I do.